Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, November 4th, regular city council meeting. DeStiles Elliott, our city clerk, would you please call roll?
Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delira. Councilmember Fagerin.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Delira requested to be excused for this meeting, she was not able to attend. I entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, on to community announcements, and we have a number of them. The first one, and this is something that's great coming off of the number of veterans events that was going on, I'm pleased to announce the City of Pullman has received a $500,000 grant for the Veterans Memorial Park project from the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program. This generous award will go before Pullman City Council for acceptance in December, but I wanted to put it in just because it was part of all the different veteran stuff that was going on. The park is an important project for many people, the Pullman community, and this grant in combination with funds that have been raised by the city and the American Legion Post 52 gets us more than halfway to the $1.5 million funding goal. To learn more about the Veterans Memorial Park or to donate to the fundraiser, please visit pullman-wa.gov/veteranparks. With it being fall, we're in the midst of leaf collection. The 2025 City of Pullman residential leaf collection is underway, leaves will be collected on Sunnyside Hill the rest of this week, and College Hill leaves will be collected next Monday through Wednesday. The city is also starting its periodic update, Pullman's comprehensive plan, there's a number of information and median dates that are set up, and so for anyone who would like to be part of that process, if you want to go to pullman-wa.gov/p periodic underscore update, you can see the schedule for those meeting dates. Upcoming this Saturday, November 22nd, the Pullman Fire Department is going to have a live fire training, so this fire is in flames, from approximately 7:00 AM until 6:00 PM. They're going to be training with local fire departments at the 905 Northwest Guy Street, next to Pullman's wastewater treatment plant. Pullman residents should expect to see smoke and controlled fire conditions in the area. If you live in the Guy Street area, please plan on having your windows and doors closed on Sunday to avoid smoke exposure. If you need to travel through that area for any reason, please note that the traffic will reduce to one lane in front of the wastewater treatment plant. And this is something that, it's great when we have an opportunity for our firefighters to actually practice in live situations in order to better prepare themselves when there is an emergency. Coming up with Thanksgiving, the Food for Pullman is holding their fifth Thanksgiving food drive and meal giveaway on November 26th from 3:30 to 7:00 PM at the Pullman Senior Center. This event provides free meal kits to people who need them for Thanksgiving, visit foodforpullman.com to sign up for a meal kit or to find out how you can help. And related to Thanksgiving, we have a number of Thanksgiving closures, the City Hall, Pullman Recreation Center, Neo Public Library, and other city and Pullman administrative offices will be closed on Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th for Thanksgiving, and Native American Heritage Day emergency services will remain available. And then coming up for the holidays, there'll be three drop-in shop opportunities at the Pullman Aquatic and Fitness Center, November 22nd, December 5th, December 12th, please register at least two days in advance at pullman-wa.gov/dropinshop, and that's where you can drop your kids off so you can shop. Upcoming Saturday, December 13th, will be participating again in the Wreaths Across America Ceremony, it'll be at 1:00 PM at the Pullman City Cemetery, if you'd like to sponsor a wreath, please place your order by Friday, November 28th at pullman-wa.gov/wreaths, wreaths are $17 each. On to the Neo Public Library, on November 20th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, we will have a community meeting that's, let's talk about the future of the library, it's where you can hear the preliminary findings of the library services and facilities assessment, and share your thoughts and ideas for the future of Neo Public Library. And also at the library, on Wednesday, December 3rd, at 11:00 PM, there's going to be a speaker that is a donation scams presentation, so be confident, informed donor this giving season. It's called Pause, Check the Cause. At this event, educators will discuss telltale signs of a scam, the ways to avoid tricks and traps, and how to report unfair deceptive fundraising tactics. This information session is presented by the Office of the Attorney General and the Office of the Secretary of State. And that was obviously a lot of announcements. To see listings of other community events, visit the city's tourism page at visit-pullman.com/events. Next up on the agenda is non-agenda item related community comments, this agenda item is the first of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of the elected officials. Specifically, this item is reserved for public comments, concerns, or other information not related to a previous public hearing or final action on the agenda. Final action items include confirmation appointments, consent agenda, and regular agenda items. This agenda item is for comments will not exceed 30 minutes in total, comments should be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body, no comment should be directed to an individual council member. Is there anyone who would like to provide non-agenda related community comments? Seeing none, I'll then move on to city council member comments, this agenda is an opportunity for council members to bring comments on non-agenda item related, and with that, I'll first of all start with councilmember Fagerin, whether you have any comments?
No comment.
Councilmember Parks.
I just wanted to let the community know that Alternatives to Violence of the Palouse is having their annual gingerbread fundraiser, December 5th from 5:30 to 8:00 at the 1912 Center, and also we are looking for gingerbread bakers, so if anyone would like to bake something for that, you can contact us through our website, thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
No comment.
Councilmember Guido?
Thank you, an announcement on behalf of the Whitman Recovery Community Center, we are holding a community Thanksgiving dinner, free to everyone, no RSVP required, although it would be helpful on our social media channels, and I want to thank the Community Congregational United Church of Christ for hosting that event, we are doing that in response to food insecurity and safety, and invite community members to come on November 28th, which is the Friday after Thanksgiving, and it's from 4:00 to 6:00, thank you.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, first of all, I wanted to say to the community out there, also because ASWSU is here, I believe it was Isaac, President Velezquez, is he here? There we go, and wanted to make sure you get the last names correct, Vice President Carpenter, correct, right there. So, we had a ruck for the fallen, so Ruck for the Fallen is a nonprofit started by CSM, Mitch Kribel, he's still active duty, and he started that because of, he saw many of his brothers and sisters come back from combat with mental health and suicide, several died by suicide. He started this a long time ago, and we had an event, first one in Pullman. Wright started over at the Veterans Memorial, which the mayor just talked about, and the mayor was there, we had Commander Harris, we had a lot of people from not only Whitman County District 12, Fire District 12, but also the Pullman Fire Department. And we rucked 11 miles, 11 feet, 11 inches for Armistice Day, Veterans Day, through downtown Pullman, up to WSU, out to the Albion Road, and then back over to Lumber Yard. The reason I bring up the president and vice president, the president reached out to me and asked how they could help. That speaks volumes about the connection that ASWSU and Pullman have, and it speaks volumes to the passion and care that all of you have for such an important topic. Our service members, our first responders are some of the most humble leaders that I've had the opportunity to meet, they struggle with things that we can only, I can only dream of. And so being able to just be there, show support, as you did, means quite a lot. And I will say one other thing, and then I'll be quiet. I had the amazing opportunity to wear the patches not only of the City of Pullman, which, thank you for that, but also of the Pullman Fire Department and the Pullman Police Department. And I'll just be vulnerable here, it goes a little bit more than just being, I have never served. When I was rucking, I started thinking about, it goes a little bit beyond just wearing the patches. The Pullman Fire Department was there for me in my late teens, early twenties, as I was struggling with seizures. Their compassion and their help were one of the reasons that I'm still alive today. The Pullman Police, they were there for me when I was about your age, struggling with mental health, with addiction, they took me off the road when, you know, I was making poor decisions, and I'm glad they did. They're also a reason that I was able to forge a better path, and another reason that I'm on this side of the ground today. So, I wanted to just say a very sincere and humble thank you to both the Pullman Fire Department and the Pullman Police Department, and thank you to the City of Pullman for giving me a new, better life, and thank you ASWSU for reaching out and being there for our veterans and first responders, so, thank you.
And Nathan, thank you for representing the city, you led the way in the ruck, chalking as you went, and with Chance there, and I know there's a reason you named Chance Chance, and so thank you very much, it's appreciated. The next item is city council request, agenda item requests, are there any future agenda item requests? Councilmember Guido?
Mr. Mayor and council, as next, the next meeting in December is my last meeting, I am requesting, although I understand that the agenda is quite full in December, a short bit on the agenda, just to formally submit and have it be part of the record, a report from the Pro Housing Work Group that I led along with Councilmember Fagerin and a number of community folks who have made a commitment to that work group for the last three years. We will be submitting recommendations from the work that we've done as far as homeownership and affordable housing that we'd like the council to consider in its goal setting for next year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So we'll work on that with the agenda. Any other future agenda item requests? Next up, community comments for final action items on the agenda, so this agenda item is the second of two opportunities during this meeting for the public to bring comments to the attention of the elected officials on any agenda item that the city council would like to take final action item at this meeting. Excluded items where public comments previously accepted. Final action items include confirmation of appointments, consent agenda, and regular agenda items. The agenda item for comments should not, will not exceed 30 minutes in total, comments should be directed to the mayor or the city council as a body, no comments should be directed to an individual council member. Is there anyone who would like to provide comments, community comments on final action items? Seeing none, we'll move on to confirmation of appointments. Council, before you, I've provided a number of names for appointment to various commissions that we have, the Arts Commission, the Environmental Resilience, Historic Preservation Commission, the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission, and with that, I would entertain a motion for confirmation of appointments.
Move to confirm appointments and reappointments.
Second.
And I need to ask that, do we need to, can we do that in general, do we need to talk through, do we need to identify each person that's being confirmed?
I think if the motion is due on, 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 yes.
That's great, okay, with that, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we confirm those and excited to have those, and for those that are interested, we still do have a number of different commissions and committees that are open, if there's someone that'd like to serve in various ways, you can find that on our city's website. Next item up is presentations, the first one is our joint meeting with ASWSU, it is great to see everybody here. I told you I'd get there by about 15 minutes in, we're 17 minutes in, so we're keeping on track, so with that, I want to invite Isaac and Grace up to join, and I'll have two councilmembers slide down, just so that we can make room for them, and this is always a highlight to be able to have joint meetings with ASWSU. You come here in the fall, and then in the spring, we have the opportunity to come to you, and we feel that that's very appropriate for us to, each of us go both ways. Go ahead and slide that down for her. And what this looks like? And with that, Kelsey, I'll go ahead and let you start.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Benjamin, and the rest of Pullman, my name is Kelsey Thorne, and I am the Director of Community Affairs for ASWSU. If you don't know what ASWSU stands for, it stands for Associated Students of Washington State, and we are WSU's undergrad student government. I would like to, on the behalf of all of ASWSU, to say thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My team and I are really excited to share what we've been working on the past semester and our future plans. With that said, I would like to invite ASWSU's president, Isaac Velezquez, to share more about what WS, ASWSU is and our collective goal, thank you.
All right, just, am I getting picked up? Cool, am I, yeah, okay. Hi, everyone, it's a pleasure to be here, personally, this is my second time here at City Hall, but it's my third year connecting with city leadership to mutually address the, or address the issues that mutually affect us. Since early May this year, I've had the privilege to serve as ASWSU Pullman President, and alongside Grace, our Vice President. And coming to this role, we wanted to focus on three main pillars, which were student engagement and community, campus safety, and basic needs. The first with student engagement and community, first and foremost, we want to recognize that that's the reason that we chose that, is for a lot of different reasons, I guess, and I'll go into that a little bit later. But as for actionable items, we've been working on encouraging campus involvement with our students, we've done this through marketing, meaningful opportunities for our students, we've been addressing the needs of specific university auxiliaries, addressing the needs of student organizations, and bringing more students into the student government process, whether that's with university budgets, with student fees, and I'll touch a little bit on that a little bit more later. As for fostering community, that's just, that's not just in regard of uplifting our WSU community, but attempting to strengthen the tie between WSU Pullman and the greater Pullman community. Pullman plays a central role, similar to what you said, Councilman Weller, to the student experience, and what students experience when they're here at WSU. And so, we've been focusing on maximizing that positive impact through adding to our programming and what we do in outreach in the community, and strengthening our liaison efforts, we've added additional staff member to focus on community affairs, and then overall highlighting Pullman events and businesses in our marketing and in our own offices. The second one is to strengthen campus safety, and specifically with campus infrastructure. When you think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, safety's right there at the bottom, and you need to, you need to feel safe in order to achieve and go further. Now, while WSU is a relatively safe campus, even on a national scale or national level, the narrative and the feeling isn't really there anymore, right? What we're doing is, oh, sorry, it's not really there anymore, and we've kind of lost that, I remember when I first toured, that was one of the main points that was highlighted, and I'm not sure that we highlight that enough. But we realized that in terms of physical safety infrastructure, our campus is really lacking, and students feel that, and we're not as prepared as we should be. So we've taken it upon ourselves to address these needs and get in a conversation surrounding infrastructure, whether that's with crosswalks, whether that's with surveillance, camera coverage, dorm safety is another one, and all these things could be improved to our campus, and we've done what we can to address those needs, and also done so on the community level as well. Just a couple weeks ago, Kelsey hosted a walkthrough with the College Hill Association, and we were joined by Councilman Weller and the mayor, and thank you for, thank you for that, that was a great experience, thank you, Kelsey, as well. And then the final one was basic needs, which is really in relation to our overall legislative priorities, and ensuring that the state is doing their part in protecting students, and giving them the opportunity and safety nets that they need to go to college. Back to our motivation for student engagement and community, there's one thing, look, there's one thing concerning our institution, our WSU as an institution, that's starting to become really real, and that's enrollment retention. That's becoming a really salient problem, I know, for Pullman, but also for students. We've really spent a lot of time focusing on that as a student government, and while recruitment is something that I've identified as a problem, even since running as freshman delegate, it's something that I ran on in improving our recruitment, that it's now kind of starting to be more addressed a little bit. But the issue in enrollment and retention has a deep impact on the services that are provided to us, our academic opportunities, and ultimately, the cost that is added on to us and compounded on to us as students. While there may be some external reasons as to recruitment or enrollment specifically, you know, that might be out of our control with birthing rates, or I guess, what else is there, national trends in overall college attendance, which I do think is still a problem, and I think we can address those. I think where student government can really play a role in is with retention, and some of you may know that from the first and second year, we have about an 80% retention rate in our students, and then, so we're only keeping about 20% of our students from that first and second year, or sorry, 80% of students, and we're losing 20% of our students from the first and second year, and then we're losing about 10% after that. And, you know, it's my perspective that, or it's not the perspective, but the reality is, is that for the most part, that 10% after the second year is around national average for an institution like us, but that 20% is a pretty profound number that we really need to talk about. And that's the main reason ultimately behind student engagement and community. Students are less likely to drop out or transfer if they have something that they belong to or are involved in, and they can have that sense of belonging. But also, if students have a tighter relationship with the community that surrounds them, then they're surely going to take advantage of it, and the data shows that that can honestly strengthen your recruitment and your retention within an institution. And so that's what we're actively producing and putting forth as a student government, but a lot of work has been based on keeping institutional knowledge and ensuring that our student leaders have the access to information so that they can advocate effectively. I've been involved with the budget process, or with budget process in my time as Senate over the past three years with different auxiliaries, and the fee process, and I'll be honest, I didn't know what I was getting myself into, and I think I've dug myself into a deeper hole each time when I learned about it, but it's important stuff, and it's important that we, as elected student leaders, are aware of that and give appropriate feedback. And so we've talked a lot about mobilizing to be a change seeker, so myself and ASWSU has been focused on evaluating auxiliary, auxiliary operating budgets, fee costs, tuition allocations, and, you know, we just had a raisin one over this weekend, or intuition over this weekend, and making sure that for the spring semester, but also for years to come, that student leaders have the institutional knowledge and the background that we can effectively give student feedback and advocate with the background that is necessary. No, we're not all finance majors, but we should certainly have that, have that background in order to be able to advise a little bit, because I think that in order to be able to advise a little bit, because I think that sometimes, something that faculty and administration can sometimes get wrong is what does a student impact? Boots on the ground, what are students feeling? How is this perceived? And how well, how well are they going to take it? Then last thing we're doing is focusing on our lobbying efforts and making sure that our student leaders also have their eyes and focus on that. Our legislative priorities range from student aid to protecting freedom of speech, freedom of speech protections, but the big thing, a big thing that we want to do this year is to work on what is our narrative moving forward and for years to come. Costs are high, and we want to reevaluate university spending, but ultimately, the federal and specifically the state government have an obligation to ensure that college is accessible and affordable. The state has an obligation to do more, as of right now, to help out this institution, especially its students. So I have high hopes that this staff and the team that we have on the Senate and exec all the way to our judicial board can plant the higher seed, and especially with our ledge team that we'll call out soon, that they can plant the higher seed, or plant the seed that higher education is a worthy investment, and it's an investment that will prove to be good for the state, because who doesn't want educated workforce? Who doesn't want an educated public? So that's where we're at with our priorities, and I'd welcome any questions for later. For right now, we have some speakers coming up, our student speakers coming up. But I also want to shout out what we have built right now within our association, within student government. I, I have a lot of trust in this team, and I have a lot of trust in our Senate to do things that are going to put us in, in the correct direction, and not just for this year, and not just for this semester, but for years to come. And so, to introduce the, Grace over here, I've had the pleasure working alongside with her for the last three years, and this last year as Vice President, and really proud of the contributions that she's done and the contributions that she will make, because still got a year, so. Grace, I'll hand it over to you.
Hi, yeah. So as Isaac said, my name is Grace Carpenter, the ASWSU Vice President, and just like Isaac said earlier, our main focus has been student engagement, trying to focus on relating to engagement and enrollment and retention as well. Mainly, we've been doing a lot of outreach to students, has been our biggest goal. Just a couple to list off that we've come up with and have now seen happen is a really cool thing. So Police in the Park was something that happened a couple of months ago, and this was just to bridge that gap between the police and the students of WSU, to get them communicated with each other a little bit more comfortable in case any health and safety things arose and they needed to reach out. Another big one is Pig Out in Pullman. So this is like our little baby project. It's my favorite project so far, but if y'all have ever heard of Pig Out in the Park in Spokane, this is a smaller version of that, just created for students and the community members, so community members to showcase their businesses, what food they have, students and their families to come down, get some food, get involved, realize that there's other things in Pullman to eat other than the panda and the cub, and not just go over to Moscow. So just to keep them involved in our community and the businesses that are downtown and the food that we do have to offer as well, because there are some things that students don't even realize are five minutes away from them instead of going fifteen minutes away. So I'm going to go over briefly each department's either announcements or what they've been involved in and what they do. If our departments are here, just at the very beginning of our announcements, if you would like to just stand up so we can be familiarized with your faces. So our exec staff is Chief of Staff Finance and Exec Assistant, Exec Assistant, we just added this year. Mainly, they focus on internal staff and finances and our meeting minutes. So our Department of Communications, that is Sam and Crystal this year. So this semester, ASWSU Communications Department has boosted student engagement by covering major events like COOG Thrive Fest, Destress Fest, and Safety and Wellness Week. We strengthened our presence through consistent reels, stories, and cohesive virals that tied into our campaigns together. Looking ahead in spring, they want to plan to launch more creative social campaigns, highlight student voices, and continue to improve real-time event coverage to keep WSU community informed and connected. Moving on to our ledge affairs, Legislative Affairs, so Department of Legislative Affairs has been working on this year finalizing our legislative agenda that we'll be lobbying on for COOG Day at the Capitol for our 2026 legislative session. We're expecting a tough year financially for the state, and we're cautiously optimistic that we can fight for and succeed in protecting student interest at the state level and federal level as well. So we're excited to collaborate with our legislators, peers, community partners, and consistence to represent WSU at all levels of government. Moving on to our University Affairs, we work to understand the needs and perspectives of the students and communicate those insights on campus administration. This will ensure the student voices are heard, so by serving and connecting students between administrators, we advocate for student priorities and help strengthen our campus across all campuses. Our overall goal is to bridge the gap between students and administrators by clearly relaying concerns, experiences, and opportunities for improvement. Moving on to our Health and Safety Department, so the Department of Health and Safety this year advocates for students' well-being on campus, and we collaborate closely with WSUPD, CAPS, and Cougar Health Services to improve resources for students. Our team organizes events like Mental Health Awareness Week and STI Week and educate and engage the student community. Additionally, we contribute to campus-wide decisions by serving the student, on the Student Health Advisory Board. So far this semester, they have organized our annual Mental Health Awareness Week and have other efforts to create and develop a new safety task force. Next semester, they are looking forward to having a mass CPR training for students along with STI screening advocating for students' needs. Moving on to our Diversity, Inclusion, and Veterans Affairs, on September nineteenth, the Diva Department hosted the 2025 ASWSU Multicultural Banquet, where generous donors donated over eighty thousand dollars to help fund our student-led conferences. These conferences bring high school students from all over Washington to visit the WSU and learn more about our programs and services that WSU has to offer, also encouraging them to come and seek out higher education. In additional, the Diva Department has been working with Veteran Student Support Services. Earlier today, they hosted a social event with food, games, food and games, whereas ASWSU and CAPS were introduced for resources for veteran students on campus. As for next spring, the Diva Department plans to collaborate with Student Entertainment Board to host tabling at their Monday movie night showing the various of our, or the various of our programs and committees such as MECHA, APAS, BSU, and COIMA. And then last but not least, our Community Affairs, Kelsey and Cameron, they'll be going over their announcements as well. Thank you.
Over the past semester, my goal for the Community Affairs Department has to become more engaged with the town so that students have more opportunities within Pullman. I've really enjoyed getting to meet and work with the City of Pullman, Pullman Police, the Chamber of Commerce, Town and Gown Members, and the College Hill Association. Everybody has been so welcoming and is a great resource. After working with all these amazing groups, I have learned that a common concern from everyone is turnover within ASWSU. Every school year, a new ASWSU group starts office, and the plans from the last year often fall through or are forgotten. This year, my team and I hope to put a stop to this issue and to help future ASWSU groups continue where we left off. We know this is a problem, and by fixing it, the collaboration between the town and ASWSU can grow even stronger. Tonight, I would now like to share some of the exciting updates and opportunities my department has been working on over the past couple of months. First, in October, we partnered with WSU Police and Pullman Police to put on the first ever Police in the Park. This was a great opportunity for students to meet with local police officers and see them as a resource instead of as a consequence. Students had the opportunity to listen to officers give insights from their perspective. Afterwards, students got to ask follow-up questions or voice any concerns they may have. Everyone involved really enjoyed the event, and it turned out to be a great success. Police in the Park had an attendance of over two hundred students, which was amazing, and it also featured live music, free donuts, and free munchies. The best part was that the robot dog showed up, and it was quite a hit. Next, on November twenty, or not November, sorry. Next, on October twenty-ninth, I had the opportunity to plan the Fall Walk Audit. Many familiar faces in this room were a part of this as well, so I want to say thank you. So this also might be kind of a recap, but it was the first one to ever take place in the McGee Park area. It was very insightful, and Allison from College Hill Association took very detailed and thorough night, or notes on all the problem areas that were seen. Our main concerns were lighting, sidewalks being cracked or raised up from tree roots, and discontinuous sidewalks. On November fourth, we hosted the Fall Housing Fair, which provides affordable housing options to students. When students come to the Housing Fair, they are given the opportunity to meet with landlords and rental management firms to discuss any questions they may have. We had a super great attendance of around a hundred and fifty students, which is one of the strongest turnouts we have had for a Fall Housing Fair. Moving on to our future plans that we are very excited about, is we plan to have a Community Kindness Week during February sixteenth through the twentieth. This is where WSU students thank important stakeholders within the community. On February fourth, the Spring Housing Carnival will be taking place, and it will give students a fun opportunity to find affordable housing for the coming school year. Lastly, I come before the community to ask for help in planning Pig Out in Pullman. Grace already mentioned this briefly, but Pig Out in Pullman would take place on April eighteenth, ideally, on Kamaiakin and Olson Street. ASWSU would most likely partner with SEB, which is the Student Entertainment Board, and we would try to get a medium-sized, more well-known artist to play on a stage in the center of the intersection or block. In addition to this, we plan to get lots of food trucks and have a beer garden as well. Top priority would be given to local vendors first, and then we would start to look for food trucks in the greater Spokane area. Admissions to the event would be an optional donation of non-perishable foods and toiletry items, which would then be donated to Community Action or the WSU Food Pantry. This event would be a great opportunity to get students down into the town and to see what the city has to offer. If you would be interested in helping me and possibly joining a planning community, please reach out to me, and I would love to get in touch. Now, I would like to pass it over to my counterpart, Cameron Jewell. Thank you, guys.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Benjamin and City Council members. My name is Cameron Jewell, and I am the Deputy Director of Community and Sustainability. So you've heard Kelsey talk a little bit about our department and our mission to serve as a bridge between WSU students and the wider Pullman community, but my position also works within the university to promote sustainable practices across campus. This includes working with our Environmental Sustainability Alliance to discuss and implement education and awareness strategies targeted towards our students on campus. This year, my focus has largely been on fostering events and opportunities for Pullman residents to connect with WSU students and vice versa. One of the big ways that we've done this lately is last Sunday, we partnered with the Center for Civic Engagement and the College Hill Association to host our Rake a Difference event. This event allowed students to participate in a cleanup of leaves on College Hill. In turn, leaves are able to be collected by the city in a more efficient manner. We know that this is kind of a problem area for students, so got them involved in that a little bit, and this helps clearing storm drain catch bins, public spaces, sidewalks, overall for the good of College Hill. So additionally, the CCE took a team of students to help clean up the lawns of four longtime residents who may not have been able to do so on their own, so that was a great opportunity to give back a little bit. We had over sixty participants, and we're able to offer some service hours to those students who participated. I want to give a special thank you to Pullman Parks and Rec, Pullman School District, Dumas Landscaping, Leland Landscaping, and WSU Facilities for donating rakes for that event. Moving on, both the Rake a Difference and Police in the Park that a couple people have talked about were hosted in Ruby Street Park on College Hill. So I have been in focus, focusing on improving the usability of that park, and that's something that's really been important to me this year, as a public space for students and College Hill residents. With ESA, we have been exploring opportunities to implement new features in the park to make it more user-friendly and to make people kind of utilize it a little bit more. As we work to gain student feedback, I also would be happy to collect any feedback that you council members or any other Pullman residents may have, and we'll be exploring ways to gain that feedback in the next couple of months. We are currently in the process of Planning Pizza for the Planet. This event is hosted in collaboration with the College Hill Association, again, and the Phoenix Conservancy to create biochar from recycled pizza boxes. Additionally, I'm working with the ESA to start a Bring Your Own Cup campaign. We received interest from local businesses, local coffee shops, and are also hoping to expand to on-campus coffee shops, so we're kind of in the beginning planning stages of that. Moving forward, we hope to continue to strengthen WSU's partnership and relationship with Pullman, encourage students to be active participants in the communities that they live in, and involve Pullman residents in campus activities. Thank you all for your time. And then next up, I would like to introduce Senate Pro tempore Bea O'Baub.
Thank you, Cameron, for the introduction. I'm Bea O'Baub, the Senate Pro tempore. The Senate's responsibilities may sound familiar to you as members of the City Council. Like yourselves, we are composed of elected members that speak on behalf of the, of the student population, passing legislation that aims to voice and address issues on campus and create a dialogue through the students and university administration. This year, our priorities include improving student engagement, supporting our student organizations, reviewing policies that affect the greater campus, and utilizing our role as a student voice. In my role, I support our senators as the Senate's representative and ensure that we carry out our jobs with clarity, fairness, and respect for these responsibilities entrusted to us. The Senate meets weekly at five-thirty on Wednesdays in Cub to afford to discuss the collaboration, planning initiatives and events, and more, and are open to the public to attend or speak in during public testimony or as guests. The Senate is comprised of twenty-four senators and delegates that are assigned into one of the three committees. Internal Affairs, focusing on strengthening connections between the Senate and ASWSU Programming and Service Committees; External Affairs, on purposeful and strategic engagement with students and the broader campus community; and Engagement, acting as our Committee Budget Review Group. Together, we work to, we work to speak and represent students, provide resources for our constituents, and advocate for their needs. And with that, I'd like to introduce the Internal Affairs Chair, Avery Long.
Good evening, City Council members and mayor. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Avery Long, and I'm a sophomore at Washington State University studying biochemistry with a minor in ethics. I'm an all-campus senator who functions as the Internal Affairs and Committee Squared Chair. Internal Affairs is an extension of ASWSU that deals with amendments to our bylaws. It is under my committee that we determine whether these amendments are ethical, constitutional, and fair for all the associated students to abide by. Committee Squared is a committee that serves as a gateway to bridge our umbrella organizations such as Black Student Union, Environmental Sustainability Alliance, and MECHA, our Latinx Student Group, among many more. Thousands of students utilize these resources, and the goal is to create an open channel of communication between their leaders and ASWSU. It is part of my responsibility to create safe and effective environments for ideological exchanges. As an association, we extend our hands to these organizations to show our, that we support them and their impact on our student communities. I find these positions to exude all the positive aspects of leadership, and it has been a privilege to serve in these positions. Thank you so much for your time, and I'd like to introduce our External Affairs Chair, Bodhi Abdulrezak.
I first would like to start off by hoping you guys had a wonderful day so far. My name is Bodhi, or my real name is Abdurrahman Abdulrezak. I am currently a sophomore studying bioengineering pre-med and a minor in public health. I served as the former freshman delegate and currently an all-campus senator, and I'm the External Affairs Chair. The ASWSU External Committee focuses on creating resolutions that focus on addressing student needs and strengthening their voices. We lead campus outreach through tabling, through events that interact with students and ensure that they are connected with their representatives. Our committee collaborates with RSOs, departments, organizations, and other offices around the campus to ensure that the student concerns are being pushed forward and turned into real action. We are dedicated to ensuring that the ASWSU Senate is connected with all the students, accessible, and more than anything, responsive to any COOG on campus. And now, I would like to introduce Engagement Chair, Stacey Stillman. Thank you.
[coughs]
Thanks Bodhi for introducing me. My name is Sage Steelman. I'm the Chair of the Engagement Committee here at ASWSU. I'm a senior studying mathematics and economics. My committee is primarily tasked with handling the Budget Council, as Bea mentioned earlier, and interacting with the various programming and service committees under our umbrella. We recently finished with Budget Council presentations, so thank you everybody. During which those RSOs under our umbrella essentially came and presented their budget requests begging us for money. Over the next semester, we'll continue deliberations over allocations to these groups. We aim to be critical but fair and hope that we can continue to build strong relationships with the groups that represent us. Thank you very much.
All right, and with that, I know that was a lot of info, but we will open it up to questions.
So let's go ahead and start with, from the council, any questions related topics that have been touched on. I know you have some additional topics that you wanted to also touch on after that, but with what's been talked about. Councilmember Fajarin?
First off, thank you so much for being here. It's always a pleasure to work with ASWSU. I also work in higher ed, more so on the community college side, and what we are seeing is more students are choosing online and class options, which definitely has challenges in terms of engagement and retention. So I just wanted to ask, is WSU seeing that and how are you engaging students who are choosing their educational path online?
Yeah, from my knowledge, the WSU Global Campus is one of the few campuses that has actually seen an increase in enrollment, and I'm not sure how that attributes to the overall WSU Pullman in specific, but I do know that we often have professors that are working with a specific college, College of Arts Sciences, or Voilin College, and then, you know, somehow they are benefactors of the WSU Global system. And WSU Global does have its own ASWSU branch, and so we don't really, unless it's for Student Government Council where we get together, and sometimes we work together on things, but usually, in terms of specific policy and what we want to get done, we usually, on the global side, we usually leave that to ASWSU Global.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. I want to thank you all for being here. Every year that we have this, I'm amazed at all the work you do while studying the curriculum that you do. I really also appreciate the initiative to continue the prior year's goals, or at least look at them at the beginning of the next year. I mean, we do that as a council every two years. We create our goals based on the biennial budget cycle, and that's sort of the guiding direction for staff and us as well. So that's really important and I'm glad you're addressing that. As far as the community events, yeah, I think we could definitely get you some help with pig out and Pullman. I'm thinking of our Downtown Pullman Association perhaps could help out, maybe the Chamber, so I'd be happy to be the person to look for that for you. And finally, I love the Bring Your Own Coffee Cup to the coffee shops and other establishments. I think that's a really, really great way to conserve resources and it just makes it fun, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
To echo my colleagues here, thank you all for coming. This is really one of the highlights of our year is hearing from all of you, and I particularly appreciate the wish for more and expanded engagement between the residential business community and the student community. It just, it means a lot for everyone. And I think I've probably had the most contact with Community Affairs, and thank you, Kelsey. Kelsey, who serves as an ex-officio member on our Pullman Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and she has been fully engaged this year, up to including attending a program of work where we kind of set goals and priorities for the next year for the Pullman Chamber. And that's a commitment, and she stayed with us for about, what, maybe five hours, you left around the noon hour, but truly a great engagement on your part, and it just further cements that relationship that we have that has continued to grow over the years. And I moved here in 1975 and I know that there was not anywhere close to the relationship, the town gown, the student-community relationship as we have right now, and each year, it continues to grow. So I commend you all on the ongoing efforts that you're taking to make that even better. So, thank you.
Councilmember Guido?
Thank you all for coming, and I want to echo what the previous council members are saying, that you're definitely on the, really happy to hear the priorities that have been mentioned around greater integration, greater engagement with the town that you folks all live in, and hopefully continuing to get off the hill and see what Pullman has to offer. So my question is around, recently, there was a mandate by the state for the county, Whitman County, to develop a five-year homelessness plan, and the consultants who did a lot of research and a lot of community outreach, including with student groups, have identified that there is obviously a homelessness issue in Pullman that is not as visible as it is in other cities, but it is here and it is present, and wanted to know from a student body population what you are hearing as far as homelessness within the student population, challenges as it relates to finding affordable housing, and if that is an initiative that you are all considering working on.
Does anyone have any comments before I say anything? No? Okay, I do know that in the past, we've lobbied on a student homelessness program to the state legislature, and it's still, it's not on our top, it's not like on our set priority list, but we are working on maintaining that program, given the financial situation of the state, and so we haven't talked essentially with legislators about that. Aside from that, I know that some senators in the past have worked on resolutions to support homelessness, or, sorry, to support students that are suffering with the issue of homelessness, but that's all I have for yous right now, but I would love to connect on what the county specifically is doing in terms of what they're putting forward for that plan.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I am so glad that Councilmember Guido brought that up, and I actually have the draft five year in my car, so I can run out after we break and grab that for you. As many of you know, and I think I've spoken about this previously, having been involved in homelessness and poverty awareness for the last, what, 18 years since I've been on council, this is something that used to be ignored. Pullman was supposed to be the paradise, where no homelessness and no poverty existed, but we quickly found out that that was not the case. But fortunately, with the unfunded mandate, which I'm not a fan of, that we do have a path forward. So thank you, Megan, for bringing that up. As far as ASWSU, I think I've spoken quite a bit already. I'm just full of gratitude, honestly. This is one of the most engaged groups, ASWSU Senate, President, Vice President, Community Affairs, that I've had the opportunity to be involved in. Kelsey and President Valeskas, I hope I got that right, is awesome. The McGee Park area that we were able to walk around first time, it was so cool to see. I will also say, as you go through this journey that you're on with your undergrad, keep in mind that Pullman is one place, but the region that we're in is pretty awesome as well. And I think I've spoken about this before, there's some pretty awesome events around. Of course, we want you here in Pullman, but thinking about it a little wider, being able to see things like, I think I spoke about this, you know, the combine derby where they crash big combines and things like that, there's nothing quite like it, you know? Colfax has a lot of cool stuff. Being able, one of the things for me is being able to see not only Pullman, but our entire region. We're a pretty cool powerhouse of events, of things to do if you get out of your comfort zone. And I know, especially as I went to WSU, I was like, God, even I grew up here, Bodhi and I were talking about it, you know, I grew up here. I was like, jeez, what is there to do here? You know, I traveled most of my life, there's nothing to do in Pullman. And then I started looking around at the other areas, you know, and it's actually, it's very cool, and it just takes a little bit more effort. So I don't know that I have really any questions. I see that all of you are so very engaged. I'm glad to hear about the veterans group that you're doing, the multicultural veterans, that's very awesome. Having worked with VMAS up there, Veterans Military Affiliated Students, I know that was a concern of theirs about eight years ago, but it seems like you've solved or at least have better connections there. Mental health, of course, I think you know from hearing me speak at different points and hearing my horror stories, you know, I spoke to you before about a lot of it. Mental health, de-stigmatizing mental health and suicide and addiction is, in my opinion, some of the largest and most difficult topics that we're going to face in the coming years. I'm very glad that your generation has taken this on. When I grew up, it was a toughen up buttercup situation. You got bullied for it or you got ostracized for it. So all of you being able to focus on that is really very awesome to see. So with that, the only thing I can say is, we need to make sure to take a picture before you all leave and commemorate this very awesome group, so that's it.
We're far from done. We have a number of items left to go on this. So first of all, I appreciate both of your leadership. When we first met, you talked about your pillars and specifically about that community engagement, and I've watched it roll out, I've watched it happen, and I appreciate the leadership that you've done and how you've actually passed it on to the other leadership and their involvement. It's been great seeing that engagement, even a greater involvement than we've had in the past few years, so I appreciate that. Related to the transition piece, I did have a meeting last week with the president's office, and we're working as a part of the town gown, actually, to have a piece that rolls under that, that is, how do we help ASWSU, GPSA, that transition piece so that you don't, you know, because right now, how life is, is you get elected, you think about what you want to do, you then get the people together, you start the project, and then you realize, I got two months left to go, and then I have to wrap it up, and then it starts to process all over again. And so, so working with the president's office on what are ways in which we can actually help that transition support so that you don't have that gap that's happening. So that's one area. As it relates to, and I just coupled the notes that I had, with the pig out and Pullman, I've already started conversations with our city staff related to that, and they're working through, how can they best support you in that? So that's something that you'll be getting reached out to by our city staff. They're already aware of it, and excited about, and excited for us to be a part of that piece. For Legislative Affairs, I'm pretty sure your hill climb is the same time that for those of us that are able to be in Olympia, so we'll probably run into each other there in the walls that way. And any ways in which we can support each other, that's something that we'd like to be able to do, because together, it's very, very similar things, and in fact, if you looked at our legislative agenda, one of the items on there is specific as it relates to costs and especially some of the funds that you're working to be able to advance. So that's something that we've listened to the students and align our funds that way. And then the last one, before we get into the other stuff, when you're talking about the retention piece and how do you, for the students that get engaged in the community, they're more likely to stay in school, they're more likely to graduate. One of the things that, as a city, we've partnered with Center for Civic Engagement, and we've started what's called Pullman Days of Service, and we've identified five different days in the year in which we're creating these opportunities for people to volunteer. The next one is going to be Martin Luther King Day, is when that is Day of Service, so we're doing Days of Service on Martin Luther King Day, Earth Day, Juneteenth, 9/11, and then Make a Difference Day in October, which we just finished up that one. And so we did a soft launch with the Make a Difference Day, and now we're rolling this out with Center for Civic Engagement. It's an opportunity for you to be able to engage in service, but also get to know the different nonprofits in our community, because each of you, I know, has a passion of things that you would like to see improved, you'd like to change, whether it's in Pullman or wherever it's going, you settle, and I want, and as a part of this Days of Service, we want to be able to help you connect to the different nonprofits that have very similar passions, and so you can be able to work in those areas of your passion. And so we'll get more information to you related to that one coming up for that Monday of Martin Luther King Day, even though I know a number of you are going to be traveling probably to the legislature during that same time. That's right. Match it. But with that, I know there's a number of topics that you also wanted to touch on, so why don't we jump to those?
Yes, so I'll actually introduce our Director of Legislative Affairs, Bargav Iyer, up. Just, Bargav won't tell you himself, but he's done an incredible job with our Legislative Affairs this year, and been super proactive in reaching out to legislators and reaching out to interested parties in what, not just what does ASWSU want, but what does, you know, what do students in our, involved with our athletic department want, what do student employees want, and so, just to chow you out a little bit, but.
Well, thank you for the introduction, Isaac, I appreciate it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of the Pullman City Council. My name is Bargav Iyer, and like Isaac mentioned, I am the Director of Legislative Affairs for ASWSU Pullman. For those of you who don't know, my job consists of lobbying and advocating for all nearly 15,000 undergraduate students here at the local, state, and federal levels. Thank you for having us here tonight, really appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you. Part of my job is engaging with local lobbying and also local advocacy, this is one example of that. Another one I will be attending is the City of Pullman's Legislative Affairs Committee, I believe that's this Friday early in the morning, so we'll be sharing our newly passed legislative agenda there, so please keep your eyes open for that. Happy to share more on that. Just to get started, we have a couple questions from students and our student government here for the council today, starting with affordable housing, something that we've talked about extensively here and both in the City of Pullman, but also at ASWSU, is addressing affordable housing. Long-term attainable and affordable housing is one of the city's top priorities. What current systems or strategies is the City of Pullman implementing to address growing concerns from students seeking affordable off-campus housing?
And what I'm going to do is I'm actually invite RJ Lot, our Community Development Director, up to be able to give you from a staff piece, and then I'll let the council then add to that. And I know, and you'll find, affordable housing is different whether we're talking ownership or if we're talking rent. ownership or if we're talking rent.
Yeah, this, this is a great question, a very timely topic, not just here in Pullman, but throughout the state of Washington. As you may know or may not know, the rent caps are currently not allowed under current Washington state law. However, there was a recent House Bill 1217, which did cap rent increases on a year-to-year basis. Additionally, the Washington State Department of Commerce and the Housing Finance Commission has been working on strategy, strategies through stabilized rent throughout the state. Locally here in the City of Pullman, we've increased the availability of accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs, throughout the city, and a reduction of off-street parking requirements, both of which increase the affordability of housing units. And then also, of course, there's the ongoing landlord-tenant laws, which I'm sure students should apprise themselves with, with that. If there's any questions of council or from the students, I'd be happy to answer those.
And I do want to turn to Councilmember Guido, who's been leading our housing work group, and if you can talk a bit about that.
Well, thanks for the question. Yeah, that, that was one of the questions I had was what your, what your population, student population folks are saying about affordable housing. I imagine it has a lot to do with rent. The Pro Housing Work Group that was formed about three years ago is composed primarily of professionals that work in the housing space. We have focused on the aspect of home ownership at this point and less about rentals, and I would encourage the, the work of the work, the work going forward of this group to consider the role of rentals and the importance of availability. We know from the Department of Commerce that our population is about two-thirds renters and one-third homeowners. One of the things that the group that I head up is very interested in is how to retain students once they graduate so that they would be, go on to become homeowners here in Pullman, and that really gets into aspects of employment and ensuring that we can retain you so that you have jobs here as well. All of that goes into creating a, a better community and a community where people want to stay and spend their money. So, that's what I have to share as far as that.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I can't tell you on affordability, but as somebody who rents myself, right actually by McGee, it's more fiscally, makes more fiscal sense to rent these days than to buy housing. I will say this much, you really, really, all students, all students need to know their rights when it comes to rentals, absolutely. Because I'm not going to say anything about, you know, rental companies or anything along those lines, but you need to know, you know, not only going into the housing, taking pictures of everything, and maybe to some of you, this is a no duh type of situation, but when I was starting to rent, I didn't know this stuff, and then being able to advocate for yourself, and sometimes taking it to the ground, being like, look, these are my rights, and being able to contact the city as far as inspections and so on and so forth, that is really very important. So, I, I cannot emphasize this enough, you know, with, with your friends who may not be in your position, letting them know as well, because it can get very difficult when you're in a housing situation and you're paying way too much, and then at the same time, you're paying for damages that you didn't cause, but you don't have evidence that you didn't cause them. So, anyways, it's my piece.
So, one thing I'd like to add to, Councilmember Weller, what he's talking about, if you have concerns about life safety, if you have concerns about the dwelling, whether or not it's adequately maintained, if there's any concerns, as a city, we cannot, because of property rights, go into the property without us being invited. But we're more than happy if there's, if you have a concern, for you to, for you to contact the city and say, could someone come in and inspect? And we're then, we're more than happy to come in and, and provide that for you. It's just, we can't, we can't look at a space and say, we're going in, we have to be invited, invited into that space. But that's something, as Councilmember Weller talked about, if, if there is a concern, do reach out to us.
Thank you for that feedback, I really appreciate it. And thank you, RJ, for coming up here and speaking. One thing that we have advocated in the past on as student government has been rent caps at the state level. Did not go through, but it is an idea that we explore yearly pretty much, so it is exciting to hear that something's happening at the state level addressing rent camps. Additionally, we've also looked at legislation this year, and we've hosted legislators who have kind of floated the idea of not requiring first-year living for students at WSU. That would greatly increase the number of students in apartments if that were to happen, that's our, our best bet. So, we have things that are happening on campus, and legislatively, we're advocating for things that are related to housing. Additionally, Councilmember Guido, you asked about homelessness, we did pass the Students Experiencing Homelessness Act last year. Additionally, we do have a campus navigator at Pullman who does provide resources to a lot of students who are experiencing homelessness or other types of financial or economic strain. So this is all very exciting for us to hear. Thank you for your response. Onto our second question about student involvement. Our Senate and our exec would like to ask, in what areas or initiatives would the city like to see more student involvement or collaboration?
So, I'll start with this one, just because student involvement, engagement is something that's very important to me. I've already talked about the Pullman Days of Service. The other thing is that what we've done as, as a council and mayor is a way of what we call neighborhood gatherings, where if you would like to have an event where you bring people to, we're more than happy to come to that event and, and be able to have one-on-one conversations and talk, talk with you about what are the issues that you have. And so, for us, that connecting neighbors to neighbors, but then also connecting you to city government and, and better understanding that we're just real people, we, we're, we live here, we care about the community just like you care about it, and we want to work with you in a collaborative way. With that, I'd open it up, if there's any council members that, as it relates to this student involvement, I would, actually, while we're waiting on that, Sean Wells, who's our city administrator, can you speak on the number of involvement opportunities just the city has as it relates to the different departments where students can volunteer and be a, as, as a part of involvement?
Absolutely, Mayor, thank you. We have a lot that can happen. Our Parks and Recreation Department is probably the largest one. They put on a lot of programs that do require or ask for volunteer support as well. Library is another one, where we have, you know, they love volunteers to come and simple things like read to kids for an hour, that can be kind of fun as well. We've got our recreation manager, Megan, in the back, do you want to elaborate more
Thank you. Yes, we, the Parks and Recreation Department works very heavily with WSU students, both individually, outside of, say, Center for Civic Engagement, but also very closely with Center for Civic Engagement as well. Our specific program areas that we have students engaged with our programs is senior programs, helping with serving meals at our senior center, as well as special events. We have youth sports coaches and officials that are involved. We have youth sports programs 365 days out of the year, and so we have a variety of different sports and opportunities for students there. We also will have volunteers with special events and different things within our aquatics program, so during the summer at Rainy Pool or at the Aquatics Center currently, we welcome volunteers in that area as well. With Kurt Damon and the Parks Department, they have small individuals as well as large group opportunities to help out and work in our parks. We have a number of special events as well, Halloween Carnival and Annual Egg Hunt, where we take large groups of students for work ahead of time as well as the day of the event. We have an after-school teen program that started last year, so it's working with sixth through eighth graders, and we welcome volunteers in that area Monday through Friday after school. And then, as I mentioned, we have had an outstanding partnership with Center for Civic Engagement for 25-plus years, where we not only work with them to secure individual students in our programs, but also group-led, such as senior meals and a few others, and then also course placements. So if students are a part of an academic course, they can provide service in our department. We also welcome practicum students year-round, and then we also welcome internships for our department as well, who are, people who are interested in working with youth, special events, youth sports, and a variety of different programs as well. Is there any other questions that I could answer?
Thank you, Megan. So, Councilmember Weller?
Would say a few things are, one, register to vote here. You know, if you want to have your voice represented here, you need to vote here. I know one of the biggest challenges is many students keep their, you know, ballots in Seattle, West Side, wherever, you know, home is from, but especially if you're an undergraduate, I'm expecting that you'll be here for around four years, three years, maybe like me, five years, you know, five-year student. But the point is, you can always move that when you go back home, but for those four years, you're, you're going to be here, and whatever we decide, whatever happens at the state, it's important for you to be able to voice your concerns to us and vote who you want in. I think another thing is to get to know who your representatives are on the council. So, I'm one of the Ward Two representatives, that's majority of apartment land and, you know, some of College Hill. Councilmember Delira is the other Ward Two. Trevor Vance, who's here, I believe he's here, anyways, he will be taking over on that spot as well. So if there's any concerns, you can always reach out to us. I would say also goal-setting, we'll be going through goal-setting. So, whatever all of you have as goals, I mean, it's just going to help us not only strengthen that connection, but help meet what your needs are or your wants are. So, I think those, we're always looking for input on how we can do better as a city, how the committees can. We do have, as the mayor mentioned, many committee, committee opportunities, and they're great resume buildings for grad school or later on through work, so.
Councilmember Parks?
Thank you. My only comment is, as far as how do, how do we get more engagement mutually, is the Pig Out in Pullman event, the Meet the Police event, the events that you also are initiating, that's really great, because then that gives residents an opportunity to real, to understand that WSU is coming down off the hill, which, that's just what everybody says, I don't, you know, I know it's not true, but it's, you know, there is this perception in, among residents, some residents, that, you know, we, we don't really ever see or engage with the students. We all know that's not true, but taking the initiative really to create these programs and reaching out into the community like this is very, very helpful. Thank you.
And I didn't let Sean finish everything, so Sean, I'll pass it back to you.
No, not a problem. There are two other things that I just recently thought of. First off, annually, and several times throughout the year, actually, we do engage with WSU Transportation Services regarding Pullman transit routes, and I know you've got a question coming up about that later. That's definitely a way to engage in how we plan the transit system, how we operate our routes, times, schedules, and things like that. The other way that would really like to see some student engagement as well is, we're currently in the middle of our comprehensive plan amendments and our, what we call the periodic update. And RJ Lot, who was up here earlier, could definitely get into that. We have over 80 different scheduled times throughout the community throughout the next year to engage in various elements of that comprehensive plan, whether that's transportation, housing, all sorts of elements in there, utilities, and all the things that kind of help shape the future of Pullman here as well. So those are a couple of opportunities.
During the announcements, you heard from a couple of council members talking about Alternatives to Violence, you, you heard with the Women Count Recovery Center, we have an incredible number of just fantastic nonprofits. That's the other way to get connected and engage in the community is through the nonprofits type of a thing. And then, there's always events that we're trying to spin up and new events to do in the community, and I'll just put a plug, I'm working on one, I'm hoping I can pull it off, but I'm trying to do a puzzle, a, a citywide puzzle competition, so, as a jigsaw puzzle, as, as a, in January. So if anybody has a passion for jigsaw puzzles and want to help put that together, just reach out to me, because I'm, I'm going, to pull it off, I'm going to need some help.
Thank you so much for your comments, everybody on the council and Sean as well. Real quick, part of, the privilege of working as DOLA is also entertaining the, or not entertaining, I should say, supporting students in their quest to get registered to vote. We do hold voter registration drives every year. This year, we were fortunate, we actually held two. One, we partnered with CCE, as all of you are aware of, but the other one, we actually had the Secretary of State, Steve Hobbs, come and visit, and his office came with materials and did allow students to get signed up to vote. So, voting is an integral part of the student experience here in Pullman. To your point about people from the West Side moving here without their ballots, that is something that we could look at down the road to try to fix and make sure that we do have more of voter engagement from our students. Thank you for that point. Councilmember, to your point about coming up to the hill, or coming down from the hill, while that's true, and students do come down from the hill quite often to engage with businesses and other facilities downtown, I personally would love to encourage the council to also come up the hill and come to campus and engage with us where we're at. I know that I see Mayor Benjamin up there all the time, thank you for, for showing up, and I see him in the Cub quite often, so thank you for being there, but I would love to encourage the rest of you to also come up and come say hi. We are located in Cub 312 and 314, so please come say hi to our Senate and our exec, we'd love to receive you. Thank you, Sean Wells, for the comments that you made, those are actually, that's, part of that is new information for me, so I will definitely be sure to disseminate that among constituents and peers alike, to make sure that they know there is an opportunity for them to get involved with that process. I know that Isaac actually has had quite an experience as part of TAG, the Transit Advisory Group. I don't know if you'd like to speak about that at all, but it has, from what I've heard, has been an amazing experience in getting to actually shape the transit system in Pullman, so thank you for your comments as well.
I will say one quick thing, that I've sat on TAG for the last two, three years, and the city's always been incredibly receptive to what students have recommend, recommended. We haven't met this year yet, but I'm very excited to get that committee going and really excited to work with the city again. Yeah, it's super awesome, so.
I, I'd say one way that you could get us up on the hills, if you need anybody to help hand out peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, I'm sure they would be willing to help on some of those dates.
Let's get that set up, I'm excited to see that materialize. Moving on to public transportation, one of the questions we had was that many students rely heavily on Pullman transit, but routes can be limited late at night and on weekends. Are there any plans to expand service hours or route coverage to better support students' needs? Is there any expansions planned to move into the outlying neighborhoods in Pullman?
And I'll let Sean Wells, our city administrator, take that one on. He's, he's higher up over the Transit Department, a few layers, but he can answer.
No, I am actually, I, I was the Public Works Director who oversaw transit as well, interim Public Works Director now, until we backfill my position with my recent promotion here to city administrator. Glad you asked this question, because I knew it was likely to come up, and we were definitely ready to go on it. Related to Pullman transit, the routes can be limited at night. We did actually, this year, go back to the midnight route on most of those campus routes. We were, we had limited down during COVID times, back to 10:00 PM. I know it used to go up until almost 3:00 AM, years and years ago, but we had to slowly increase the service due to COVID. We made that call this year to be able to do that. We also were able to expand some of the routes. We introduced the route to the airport last year. We introduced the route to the airport last year, which circles around the rest of the city, but also hits apartment land and some of the campus stops as well, as I believe a stop at Flag Lane. We did some modifications to that route this year, so that during the daytime, it doesn't go all the way through the neighborhoods in the rest of town, because we were finding that ridership during the daytime was not necessarily as strong as it was for that airport route. So we started at the transfer center downtown. We did introduce the Transit Stop, we moved it over from Beasley to Flag Lane, and continuing to improve that location with the Facilities Department on campus, so that we can hopefully work there on the grassy side to get an actual shelter in place, hopefully soon. And we've been working with some safety improvements there as well, with some lighting, the intersection there with Cougar Way as well. We also, speaking of expansions, this year opened up the Olympia Avenue Expansion Route, so that kind of hits the South Side, near Ordin and Rogers, hits the Rotunda Dining Hall as well. And that opened up a lot of opportunities for us to pick up some of those South End, not only the dining hall, but the residence halls as well. And we're continually looking at newer developments, you were asking about outlying areas within the rest of the city. We're currently and continually working the transit system with our engineering groups on what future development opportunities are coming, so that we know where new developments might be, where we can expand. In fact, there was a meeting today, we were looking at some stuff up near Pullman High School, that unfortunately isn't going to work, because the roads weren't designed for bus waits. So we would have to increase the asphalt and the subbase and that to make that happen for there. So those are just some of the things, and then we mentioned the TAG route as well, and their annual, when Transit meets with TAG and the whole group there, and working with the opportunities to request changes to routes, and what about this, and what about that, and we always like that engagement and that feedback as well. WSU population is about 80% of our overall ridership, and so we definitely know that that's an impact when we make even small changes to that, so. With that, Mayor, turn it back over.
Okay. I think that pretty well covers everything.
Wonderful, thank you for answering that, I really appreciate it, that gave a lot of insight into our transit plans for the near future. Moving to our fourth question about health and safety initiatives, what recent health and safety initiatives has the city of Pullman been developing or implementing, both within the city and your campus?
And with that, I'm first going to invite a couple of staff up, so Darren Jones, our Fire Marshal, and then also Chief Breschers with the Pullman Police, to talk, at least the safety, we'll talk on the safety side.
So I'm Darren Jones, Fire Marshal, and I could talk about fire, education, prevention, all night long, but I'm not going to do that. It's my life, I live it, I love it. One of the most recent things that the city did is we passed short-term rental legislation, and within that short-term rental legislation, there are fire safety components, such as smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, emergency egress lights, and evacuation maps. So that's one thing that we recently did. Other things that the Fire Department does, and the city does on a regular basis, is we work with our partners up at WSU, WSU Police Department, Pullman Police Department, as well as WSU Fire and Safety, Environmental Health and Safety, and we do public programs, we do fire drills in all the dorms. At the start of the school year, you'll see us up there. We do public programs on just about anything, and if there's a topic that we haven't done, we'll do one for you, we'll make it. So cooking, cooking fires is the number-one fire that we respond to, and so I can't tell you how many cooking fires that we go to, and we educate after the fire, but we like to educate before the fire. So cooking fires is a big, big one that we do. EMS, we do a lot of EMS programming on medical, so Narcan, that's a big thing that we need to know how to use. It's out there, and we're going to show you how to use it, it's quick and it's easy. We do a lot with our Greek chapters. I'm up at the Greek houses quite frequently, some of you may have seen me up there, and so we go in there, we do assessments, we do fire drills, inspections. So fire and life safety is a huge component for the Pullman Fire Department, and as well as responding to calls, but we would rather preemptively make those emergencies not happen, so. Questions?
With that, Chief?
Good evening, welcome, it's great to see everyone here. I was going to make a brief comment, I attended the spring session that was joint as well, and I was extremely impressed. You guys are, have a bright, bright future, I can tell. Some things that the Pullman Police Department has been doing in conjunction with the city and with WSU. Earlier this year, we entered into a joint grant application through the Department of Justice and the Lauren McCleskey Foundation. If you're not familiar with the Lauren McCleskey Foundation, that is, that was created after Lauren McCleskey was murdered in a dating relationship at the University of Utah. She was a Pullman resident who went to school here and was a track athlete. Her mother still lives in town here and is a faculty at WSU. This is something that's pretty important for our community, and we have a very safe community, but dating violence does happen. And the Lauren McCleskey Foundation has done a great job of pushing this topic, as uncomfortable as it may be, out into the forefront, so people can talk about it and we can find solutions. One of the solutions is this grant application. The grant application is going to provide funding, if it is approved through the Department of Justice, for WSU and the city of Pullman and the Pullman Police Department, for a variety of things. For the Pullman Police Department, it would go towards training to help us be better at investigating some of these incidents, as well as some preventative measures. Through WSU, they would be able to apply a lot of that to some facility improvements, lighting, et cetera, those kinds of things. That's something that we entered into this year, that I'm very proud that we were able to participate with and help out with. Some other things that we participate in, the Pullman Police Department is a big, big believer in community-oriented policing, and that is a very popular slogan to throw out there, but for us, it's important because we cannot police you, that doesn't work. This is a community that we're all together, and we have to work together. Whenever there are problems, one or two police officers showing up does not solve the problem. The problem has to be solved, whatever that may be, working with the community, whether that's through education, whether that's communication, understanding. We have to work together to solve all these problems, and so we really apply that philosophy in everything that we do. Everything from, you know, our officers will go up to the Greek community, and we provide public programming to the Greeks. They request and invite us to come in. Sometimes it's mandated that they participate in these programs, but it's a great opportunity for us to go into the houses, to talk with people, and to get to know them, and, you know, to kind of find some common ground and provide them with some education and some preventative ideas. And some of the things that we talk about are simple, common sense. Some of the other things are misconceptions that people may have. For example, if someone were overdosing on something, there may be a fear to call and report and ask for help, because they're afraid that someone's going to get in trouble. That's not our goal. Our goal is to help. We don't want people to die because someone is afraid to call 911. We don't want someone to die because they got a bad batch of something that was laced with fentanyl. We want to come up and solve that problem and help them, that is our goal, because someone dying doesn't do anyone any good. We're not going to be going after people who essentially have become a victim themselves by making a mistake. So that's our goal, this is community-oriented policing, we want to work with everyone to solve problems, not go around as jackbooted thugs, that's not who we are. I also wanted to thank you for Police in the Park, that was great, we're happy to participate in that and glad to do that again. We also have another event that we do with community engagement, which unfortunately happens during the summertime, and that is National Night Out. That happens the first week of August every year, and I would invite all of you who are still in town, some of you may not be returning yet, but if you are in town, to please come down and join us for National Night Out. And then a couple of weeks later, there'll be the National Lintel Festival, and we have a booth, and we try to engage as much as possible there as well. Those are some of the things that we're doing, and I won't take up any more time. Does anyone have any questions?
So I know we have a couple of councilmembers that are very engaged in different areas, and would you like to talk about Alternatives to Violence?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chief, and I, and Darren too. I just want to say that the community-oriented policing is really a very strong philosophy in our department, and we're all aware of that and how different it is from what law enforcement is usually construed to be. Regarding the Pullman Police Department and the WSU Police Department, I work at Alternatives to Violence, I'm not an advocate, I'm more in the background, but our police departments are so responsive, if somebody calls Alternatives to Violence, and, or if somebody is in trouble, and maybe they've been transported to the hospital, the police officers will actually call our person, our hotline, and our advocate will go to wherever that survivor is and be with that person if they want that. And that relationship between our police officers and the hospital, it really, really makes a difference in the lives of people who are in that sort of trouble. So I would say, if you know of anybody, or if you yourself have experienced anything, it's always, if you can call ATVP, it's free, it's confidential, always. I don't even know the names of our survivors, everyone, it's very, very confidential, so that's my little PSA to, if you know a friend, or a roommate, or somebody who's struggling, you know, maybe talk to them about that, but also don't be afraid to call, like Chief Breschers said, if you see something, say something, and if you call the non-emergency number, you can talk to a police officer about it. I've had personal experience with someone I know who has been in danger, and I've, the police are there to help that person at that time through that situation. They are not there to arrest you, report you, anything like that. And I really appreciated Chief's message about that, because it's, it is a misconception that if you call the police, you're in trouble. Well, maybe though you do need that help, and the same goes for our fire and our EMTs, they're, they're just, they're really there to help, and they really do, so we appreciate the partnership very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Parks. Councilmember Guido, did you want to talk about Whitman County Recovery as it relates to this?
Just want to make the student population aware of the fact that there is Whitman County, our Whitman Recovery Community Center, which is part of Latour Recovery Center, so folks that are in recovery from substance use and mental health challenges are invited to come to the Recovery Center downtown, right next to Neil's Coffee, and it basically provides a safe space for folks who might want coaching, peer coaching, is a peer-coach model, so these are folks that with lived experience in mental health or substance use, alcohol abuse, et cetera. So we also provide a number of activities for folks that are in recovery. While I know Cougs for Recovery does a fantastic job up on campus, we partner with them, and this is a complement or alternative space to come to if you wanted to perhaps have more anonymous place to go, so just want to make you aware of that.
And then I'd like to share, one of the items I'm working with the hospital on is a mental health piece with it, and we're looking at mental health as a community-wide mental health, and one of the things that we've been able to do in the last month is identify over 400 individuals that are within the system that actually need additional assistance, additional help, and have the potential where if they get off their meds, if they get off their programs, things, they, things can end up where the police get involved or counselors get involved, and what we're trying to do is actually head that off, and so there's, it's a integrated behavioral health process where they're proactively actually reaching out to those individuals in order to help them keep on track with their programs, with things that are set up, and we're hoping by January to actually have some numbers of how that's actually making a difference as it relates to our effect with our first responders, effect with emergency room visits, things like this. So there's a, there's a whole piece that we're working on with, around the mental health piece, that you're going to be hearing more about in the next few months related to that. Is there anyone else that would like to share with that?
Those are wonderful points, thank you so much. I understand mental health is incredibly important, so hats off to you, Mr. Mayor, for pushing for that. Additionally, thank you both councilmembers for contributing. I walk past the Alternatives to Violence on the Palouse almost daily, because I go to Neil's quite often. It is a wonderful resource to have here. To the Chief's point about asking for grants, like I said, or like Isaac said earlier, the state's really in dire financial straits, and one of the things that we are advocating on as student government is greater protections for victims and survivors of sexual harassment, sexual assault. It's on our legislative agenda, believe it or not, so we will be approaching the state this year to ask for some more support, both financially and systematically, for those survivors. And if the city would like to collaborate, we are open for that, so please reach out to Isaac or our Director of Community Affairs. I know that there are wonderful people to reach out to about this, and we'd love to collaborate. Thank you for that. To our last point, but definitely not our least point, is building community. How can the city of Pullman foster a stronger sense of community and engagement for WC students? As a personal aside, real quick, I picked WC over UW for a variety of reasons, community being chief among them. WC, being a COOG is something that not, people who aren't Cougs have a hard time understanding, and it's not really until that one time and that one point in your life where you truly understand and grasp the gravity of, and the enormity of WSU, and what it means to be a part of this institution, that you truly understand what being a COOG is all about. And that has happened a variety of times, and a number of times in so many different scenarios to so many different people. I'm sure all of you have very, very great personal stories to share on this. But for me, I think community is the biggest reason why I came here, and I would really love to hear why the city council, or how the city council plans on increasing and fostering that stronger sense of community here.
Well, I'm going to turn first to Councilmember for Jaren, I'm going to put him on the spot as it relates to our community table event that we did this last year and stuff going I'm trying to give everybody an opportunity to share, and hopefully what you're seeing in this is, it's, we're very engaged in the community in these different areas and very passionate, and I want you to see the exciting things that the different councilmembers and myself, that we're working on together.
Thank you, and I'm already surprised by how much engagement and working, community working, we've already talked about so far, so I feel like anything else is just icing on top of the cake. So I want to thank Mayor Benjamin for bringing forward the event, this was actually funded by an Anovia grant, and I think that in general, our society is becoming more and more siloed, we're more and more behind our screens, and we want folks to be out in the community and in person, talking to their neighbors and engaging with their communities. So what we did is we put together a community table event, this was on a weekend, and we invited folks to come downtown Pullman, pick up their favorite meal. We had, how many tables did we have out? How many, what was that final count? Twenty, thirty, I don't know, I don't want to say a hundred.
Sean would have that number.
I believe the number was 23 banquet-sized tables that would host like eight people or 10 people on each table.
Awesome, and we had, DJ Goldfinger was there, and it was, honestly, it was fantastic to see the, how many people in the community showed up, talking to folks, oh, and icing, what was really awesome, which we included on that, was a bingo card, and each square on the bingo card had something like, I eaten at so many places in Pullman, or I have a dog, what were some other ones on that? But, yeah, written in a combine, or it's my first year in Pullman, stuff like that, and that really allowed an awesome talking port for students and people in the community to engage with each other, because I feel like talking to somebody new, especially when there's other people around, is really intimidating for a lot of folks. So it was a great starting point for a chat on that bingo sheen. And I felt like this is something that we want to do on a quarterly, quarterly basis, and we're open to working with ASWSU, maybe tie in, pig out in Pullman to that maybe somehow, and that was just a really great opportunity of engagement, bringing the community together that we had this year. that we had this year.
Councilmember Parks?
And just to add to that, you know, having this quarterly, I think it might be really fun to have it up on campus someplace. I mean, I think we know some people who can get us some facilities, right? And then, and just navigate, you know, the intricacies of that. But I think, as we were talking about, come down the hill, go up the hill, that would be a really fun and inviting thing, I think, to get people up on campus.
We'll see, we're working toward quarter. We're not sure, it might take a little bit to get there. Seeing if there's others. Councilmember Weller?
I guess so. Haven't spoken in five minutes, so why not? You know, I liked what you said about us coming up to campus. Because I heard that from, you know, somebody else, a community member was talking to me. Students don't come down. And I said that very thing. I said, you know what? No, we need to, we need to go up. That's what we need to do. So you're going to work on parking passes for us, right? I'm just kidding. No, I do think that I, so I'm often asked to come and speak to different groups. I think a few of us are, I know the mayor is, and so on. And for me, it's usually about leadership or personal experiences, and life philosophy, those sorts of things. I think us being able to engage in that way, and maybe reaching out and saying, hey, we'd like to talk to you, you know, about what we do at the city, that would be a good opportunity. And I kind of, I think back to, there's a saying, and the reason it's on my mind is because it was a part of The Ruck for the Fallen. Their motto is deeds, not words. And so doing something, not talking about it. So often now, what I try to do is, you'll see me, I'm sure, I'm always going around campus with my pup, my white dog, and my vest, my weighted vest. So you'll see me a lot up there. And sometimes the best thing that we can do is exactly what you were saying with the mayor, what he's doing is, you know, being at the cub and just being visible. And letting you know, all of you, that you can reach out anytime you want, and if you have concerns, or you have questions, just want to talk about life. You know, it doesn't have to be always business, you know? Sometimes I've taken meetings, I take meetings all the time at Pups and Cups downtown, but wouldn't mind taking them up there in the cub or whatnot. And I think that's some of the best ways that we can do is be there, be visible for you. And, you know, you're right, it goes both ways. So I appreciate what you're talking about. So thank you.
One thing that I will want to mention on the note of coming up, or community-related events that are on campus, I don't think we've mentioned it yet, but we hosted a trunk retreat with CFSL last month, and that was hosted by UniAffairs, and specifically our Deputy Director of Student Affairs, Marion, if you want to, Marion Allenees, and with Katie Moriwaki as well. Yeah, that was a great opportunity. I think we brought, how many attendees did we have? Two hundred? Two hundred? I don't know, it's quite a bit.
Two hundred volunteers.
Two hundred volunteers, okay.
And that's so hard.
Yeah, yeah, it was great. It was great to see.
I tried to attend, because you had hours, you said you're open, but you closed early. But, you're good. No, no, it was all, no, I was coming to volunteer. I wasn't, I wasn't coming to get candy. I know. No, no, the families stopped coming. I understand why you shut down. That was fine. You just had a feeling that the families were going to, we stay out a lot later, but they, the parents like to put their kids to bed, so you definitely see that. Two things that I wanted just to touch on, one is, I talked earlier about our tourism page that we have, that is the visitpullman.com events. And oftentimes I'll hear comments from the community members where they'll see a flyer about Indian night, or about Bangladesh, and they're like, it happened a week ago, I wish I'd known about it. And so any ways then which you can make sure you get those events posted out on the city's piece, because a lot of community members would like to come up, and would like to be involved in those different events, but they don't find out about them until too late. And so please share the events that you're doing on that, just, and I know you're doing, you're starting to do more and more of that, but please make sure that's happening, because that's the one comment that I will hear from community members, is they would really like to connect and engage, and they miss that one. The second thing to talk about is, right now, and this is something that the city's, part of the city's not leading it, but there's a Heart and Soul Initiative that's actually being funded through Anovia also. And it's a process in order to look at what is the hearts, the desires of what people of Pullman would like to have. And as a part of that, we're moving from the Phase One and Two parts, phases, where it's the data collection, to now it's into identifying what are those dreams, what are those aspirations, what are those projects that the community would like to have, and then on into, how do we then actually start forming groups in order to make those things happen? And that's something that I would really recommend and invite for, as students, for you to be a part of that visioning process for the community. What's been talked about earlier is about the goal-setting that the city council does. As a part of that goal-setting, that's the work that the city does, but as the city government, but there's so many other aspects of the city that we're not, as the city government, involved in, but as a community, we're involved in. And so that heart and soul touches on those aspects. And so I'd really encourage you to, as was stated from Councilmember Weller, make sure you provide comments. In February's, when we'll be doing our, the city council goal input from the community, but then also have people at the table around this heart and soul to be able to help shape the direction of our community.
Thank you all for your comments. I really do appreciate it. I think you've given us quite a bit to think about and take away from all of this. I know that, Kelsey, you probably have enough work to last your lifetime, and we are happy to have the collaboration with the City of Pullman and their city council. Before I take off, just a quick shameless plug, I will be in Olympia, serving as our full-time student lobbyist, PDC-registered lobbyist, from January till whenever session ends. If any of you are over there and would like to see an over-caffeinated, underslept, overworked student lobbyist, I'm happy to get coffee or meet otherwise. Please reach out, I'm happy to facilitate that meeting conversation. So thank you very much. Kelsey, mic's all yours.
So on behalf of ASWSU, I want to thank all of you guys tonight for coming out and spending your time and allowing us to be here. It really means a lot. We truly appreciate all of the work you guys all do within the town, and we really look forward to our continued collaboration with all of you. With that, Grace, Isaac, do you guys have any ending notes you want to say?
Any last?
No, just, I mean, I guess I'll piggyback on everyone else that said that this collaboration is incredibly important. I know that for senators, and during my time in senate, a lot of what we've done in our legislation and try to use our student voice is in collaboration with the community. And we always love when y'all come up, so hopefully in the spring, I'm excited for that meeting, and we'll have a little bit of ideas for y'all, from our senate specifically. So thank you.
Grace, anything from you?
Just thank you guys for having us, and we look forward to working with you second semester. We have a lot of great ideas to implement with y'all involved as well, so thank you.
And thank you again. It is joy for this relationship, and continue to go that way. With that, we will adjourn for nine minutes, so there's an opportunity to connect, to meet, and greet, get that picture in that we really want to get, and then we'll start back again at 7:35. And then we'll start back again at seven thirty-five.
Our next item presentation is Sean Wells with an update on our current goals and priorities. And staff can now move forward.
Yeah, come on up, come on up. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and good evening. Tonight, I wanted to do this at the last meeting, we ran out of time. Funny, that's where we're at right now. So you're going to get an eighty-minute presentation. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Tonight, I wanted to talk about kind of an update, that something that has not been done since we actually implemented the council goals and priorities. Due to some staffing changes in the administration here, and some things were slipped through the cracks in that whole time. So Mayor and I discussed this and wanted at least give an update of where we're at, because we are going to be going into the next two-year biennial budget cycle. And this kind of feeds into that. So it's kind of a status update of the twenty-four, twenty-five council goals, so that when we start the budget process, we can get into the twenty-six, twenty-seven goals and priorities updates. So quick timeline here of when this was all created. It actually started earlier than that, when staff met in November of twenty-twenty-three. And they didn't put that on there, but we wanted to at least show that we took some public input. We, council had an open house event to gather that public input in person. There were some goal-setting retreats that the council went to as well. And continued that discussion, and then the final document that we're going to go over tonight was adopted in June of twenty-twenty-four. The goals and priorities were set into a combination of short, medium, and kind of long-term items, as well as identifying issues to support if opportunities present themselves. They were priorities used to inform, as I mentioned, that twenty-five, twenty-six budget process, and they helped shape the priority funding with appropriate data-driven solutions. The twenty-five, twenty-six budget then informed the department work plans. So we took those and then built our work plans around that. The council, like I mentioned, will also go ahead and continue those for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight biennial budget process. The long-term ones up here are in blue, and we'll start there with the top, talking about bypass, and we'll go clockwise in this particular diagram as I present them tonight. The two-year goals are the ones that are listed in green, and then kind of the opportunistic ones are the small ones that were written in red, and I'm not going to go into the discussion about those tonight. So the first long-term area, priority area, was a bypass. And we've kind of changed the name of this a little bit over time as a freight alternative route. We've talked about it over many, many years as a bypass, but the particular goal is written there is to advance a downtown freight and transportation bypass. So the way we've handled that, we've partnered with the Palouse Regional Transportation Planning Organization, Whitman County, and WashDOT early in twenty-twenty-five to work on a freight alternative study. It was led by the RTPO in partnership with WDOT. They were the ones that provided the funding source for that. Whitman County and the City of Pullman, myself particularly, informed the process on that with the consultant firm that we hired. We hired Welsh Comer and Kittleson Associates to create that plan there. There's the nice, pretty graphic of the cover sheet for that. The study identifies practical, cost-effective alternatives to shift through truck traffic away from the downtown core. That was the intent. How do we get the truck traffic that doesn't need to go through Pullman to go around Pullman? And what would that look like? Some trucks have to come here, the deliveries that are made in town. And so it identified, top practical identification, top practical routes were identified. Primarily, those were Bishop Boulevard, the Sand Road Kirkendall Route, and the Albion Road Route. It wasn't just one of those that was a silver bullet, it was a combination of all three of those that had to happen in conjunction with the other two, so that we could remove, in theory, up to seven-hundred-and-fifty truck traffics from the downtown core, which would be about fifty percent of the total. The other fifty percent found, the study found, had a reason to be here. They were the ones delivering to the local economy and inside Pullman proper. So when it's done, like I said, seven-hundred-and-fifty trips, and we move on to the next priority area, which was housing. And this was to develop and advance a long-term attainable and affordable housing plan. This work group is still kind of working on proposing some things for the first quarter of next year. Won't be done this year. Working ahead on this, some of the city staff had taken some of these low-hanging fruit items, and we did get the middle housing, the missing middle housing plan and the housing action plan implemented with that. We did have some zoning code updates to accessory dwelling units that were implemented in this last two-year cycle, simplifying the registration process and the regulations on those. One of the next goals was to repurpose in-town railways and developing that plan. That's still kind of in the works. That's a bigger element than I think anybody really anticipated, in the conjunction with conversations with WashDOT, the federal government regulations on that as well. And we anticipate some further discussions by the end of the year. We've been working in conjunction with the City of Colfax to maybe do some joint partnership on that, because we're all both very interested in that, and how can we maybe approach that together? Mayor and I have been in, and Kurt with Parks has been in conjunction, discussing that as well. And Councilmember Jared, sorry, you're sitting over there waving at me, and I didn't pick up on the clue, my apologies. Strategic influence and partnerships. This one was to work to, what can we do to better enhance our influence and partnership plans with local, regional, and state, and even national entities? And so this is something that the Mayor and I have been working on, along with other staff and some of the council members as well. We know that everybody's kind of a, has a player and a part of this. Some of the major ones that we've encouraged and seen, our community development director, RJ Lott, is now the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven president of the Washington State Planning Directors Conference. We've also seen our regional airport director, Tony Bean, been elected as twenty-five, twenty-six president of Northwest Chapter of the American Association of Airport Executives. That's a mouthful there. We also have a lot of ongoing staff and council representation in a lot of these boards. I'm a member of the RTPO by title as a Public Works Director, similarly with the Palouse Base in Aquifer Committee, and I know some of you are appointed to those committees as well. Our representation with Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Pullman Association, Wayne Thompson, our transit manager, is on both boards for the Washington State Transit Association and the Washington State Transit Insurance Pool, and is very involved in both of those. We have staff that are part of the Association of Washington Cities, the mayor as well, and PNW AWA, another acronym we can throw up there, that's the Pacific Northwest Chapter of the Association, the American Waterworks Association. And we have several staff members that are on that board, and our water team is there. We've got many others, the Whitman County, Port of Whitman, WSU, and our involvement with the Ninth District Legislature's last meeting definitely shows how involved we are regionally and even some nationally as well. Welcoming was another long-term priority area, to promote the community neighborhood connections, the cultural diversity. We got a lot of that tonight, right? Welcoming with WSU and just people coming to the community. This slide is going to get really messy, and it's meant to be that on purpose, because one of the first things we did is we finished Project Downtown. We created a welcoming environment for everyone down there. Mobility impaired is much better. We got rid of the tree roots that have been buckling the sidewalks. We created a very nice place there. But we improved the right-of-way sidewalk use code to handle some of the business usage. We've got our Lentil Festival and Parade. We've engaged with First Down Fridays. We had that amazing trick-or-treat experience down there in conjunction with that. Downtown Pullman Association and Civic Trust also worked on that pumpkin wall that brought in a lot of people to carve and paint up their pumpkins. We mentioned the community table several times tonight. We're going to have the Holiday Fest and Tree Lighting coming in about two weeks. We've got a lot of the outdoor open air markets that occurred. The Pullman Days of Service is in play. The Community Heart and Soul coming here for America's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary will be there. We've heard about some church spaghetti feeds and food drives that have been amazing. So I think that we've nailed this one. And in fact, just going back to that, there were some other ones that were mentioned that I believe I put on here that were not listed, that I caught at the very end, Music on Main, the concerts in the park, the movies in the park, some of those other events that we've had, trying to bring people in and have great community interaction there, too. Strategic tourism, this committee was kind of moved to the, from the Strategic Tourism Committee, moved to a council work group component of that. We've got requests for proposals in the Tourism Promotion Marketing Event Coordination Series. We're about to take those elements and combine them into the Professional Services Agreement that we've, will be entering in with the Chamber of Commerce. Hopefully, next month, we'll be passing that one through the council for adoption. Community engagement and communications, this is where we move into the two-year goals, kind of the smaller, quicker goals that we're working on here. Increasing community outreach and public engagement, so everything that we kind of mentioned above with that community engagement component, but some of the things we've been doing internally, we made some significant changes to our website. We're continually updating that website, but the rebranding component of that also played into the website changes. We increased our social media presence. Megan Farren was hired as our communications coordinator, and we kind of let her loose on some of that, and as we've seen, that's really driven community engagement through the social media channels quite significantly. We had the council town hall that we had earlier, and we opened up our online permit submittal portal. That was a huge deal, that we've seen a dramatic decrease in the number of paper applications we've seen and a number of increase in the people that are applying online, that don't have to just come in for routine stuff, they can do it from the comfort of wherever they're sitting, or even standing. We also started our utility billing portal. That was a big changeover that took a lot of effort, a lot of work, a little bit of pain with it, at least lately, but we're working through some of those challenges with that right now. And as mentioned earlier, we've got the periodic update in the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned earlier, we've got over eighty points of contact, meeting times, open houses, times when we're going to go to the Planning Commission, bringing it to council to discuss. It's over eighty different times when the public, the community, has an opportunity to engage in this. And the brand recognition was another thing that was mentioned. The banners, the kiosks, the communications and the presentations. And then just recently, we had the staff open house on October twenty-third, where we had goofy guys like RJ, Megan, and even myself engage with the public to talk about what things are going on and what's happening there, too. So, you're welcome, RJ.
You know you're loved.
The city department visioning, this was a long one. So I had to kind of break this apart a little bit, but this one was to advance short and long-term department planning regarding organizational structure, the facilities, plans, to improve the quality of life there. We developed financial strategies to do this, but some of those program areas that I wanted to touch on tonight, the three-one-one system was paused until we could get our enterprise asset management complete. We realized that we needed to kind of phase those in a certain order, so that we're working right now to, we just finished Phase One of our enterprise asset management program that included fleet, water, sewer, wastewater treatment plant elements in that asset management. We've got that up and running. We're getting that kind of moving forward here through the end of the year. Beginning of next year, we'll implement other phases of that, which would include our parks, our streets, transportation elements, and the rest of that. Once those are all in play, then we can start working on the three-one-one element of that, and that's currently planned right now for a twenty-six to twenty-seven implementation timeline. Zoning areas, we completed the zoning area analysis earlier this year. Arterial review was added into the Transportation Master Plan, CIP project, that is currently scheduled for twenty-twenty-seven and twenty-twenty-eight. Trail lighting is in our current CIP plan, estimated to begin working on that in twenty-thirty-one. Transit services is an ongoing thing, as you heard me talk about earlier tonight. We implemented the airport service, we went back to midnight service on the late-night runs. We are fully staffed now with twenty-eight drivers, two operations supervisors, and an ongoing, brand-new, three new electric buses that we just implemented online as well. Multimodal safety routes is an ongoing thing as well. We've had six total, just as an example, some of the citywide safety improvements we're working on, we've got six rectangular rapid flashing beacons through town, the pedestrian crossing ones. We had added three of those last year, and we've got another four that have started. They're a little backdated on parts and equipment, so those should be coming online in February, once we get those done. But, so we'll have a total of ten of those throughout town as well. Also work with the Complete Streets projects and the programs there that's coming here in a couple of weeks, I believe, to talk about the Complete Streets stuff with staff, and then there'll be likely a presentation to council coming as well. And then we're also looking to hopefully finalize in twenty-twenty-six the bike and pedestrian plan that was kind of paused a few years ago. We'd like to maybe implement that. That was also a recommendation, the Parks Pros Plan, is to finish that work as well. Urban forestry, this is a kind of a program and would need a position as well, so that was paused due to budgetary concerns, but there might be some opportunities there to work on that, budget-dependent, with the twenty-seven, twenty-eight biennial plans. Dog-off-leash areas is also in the CIP for twenty-twenty-eight, and I'm sure Kurt is eagerly waiting to woof that down. Sorry, RJ. Design standards, the facade standards is in the twenty-twenty-seven work plan there. And the Recreation Sports Complex was a very large, ambitious goal, that we have not started anything on that as of this time. I think that there's some opportunities there that may possibly come into a joint venture, public-private partnership, school district work as well. Economic development, this is to support community businesses and economic growth. All that stuff that I mentioned about the welcoming, a lot of that ties into this as well, is bringing people downtown, bringing people to Pullman for some of these community events, Lentil Festival, some of that. And I highlighted it again, we finished Project Downtown, so that's the Public Works Director coming out in me, but that, I think, had a lot of spin to this whole element, is that we've got a great place now where people can come and congregate and be a part of that there. The right-of-way sidewalk use was a part of that. We had multiple outdoor markets, like I mentioned before. The Business Blend Monthly Meetings, where we've got the businesses meet up to do networking on the second Tuesdays of every month. And we've got some improved coordination efforts with the Pullman Chamber of Commerce. Like I said, we're working on that tourism contract as well. And the economic development focus that the new or kind of revamped town gown is looking to focus in on as well. Staff support, this is to promote a work environment which values our employees, promotes their wellness, and celebrates their successes. One of the first things that we did was a Brown Bank Leadership Series. I brought the book that we're all working through. It's developed into ten chapters, it's, there's ten lessons here, it's like dealing with how to build leadership within the staff. And we're going through, we broke up with the teams, there were probably fifty staff members that are going through this leadership development. We broke those fifty people up into teams, ten teams, about five people each, and then each team then, as we all go through the book, each team is assigned a chapter to kind of present on a monthly basis. We're one chapter away from finishing this, and we're about ready to start the next adventure in twenty-twenty-six, and I don't know what that is yet, but that's one of my tasks as well. We also had our benefits fair and our wellness fair that we just completed on October twenty-ninth to support our staff and our mental well-being, as well as our physical stuff as well. We've got a lot of monthly events that we do as staff, as you can imagine, we have to kind of relax and have fun. This one that's coming in actually tomorrow is the Battle of the Bowls, and we have a lot of these kind of food-themed events to get people involved. As far as I have learned, we have about fourteen staff submissions that are going to come in and bring a crock pot of soup, and we go and we judge. and bring a crock pot of soup, and we go and we judge them, and we have a great time. Dee, I think, do you have one coming tomorrow? What do you have coming?
I'm just telling.
We also have our Cheers for Peers, which is a way that staff can congratulate or celebrate good work that other staff have done around the city as well. And if you remember, we started the Pullman Five-by-Fives, which was a way to get to know staff. I thought this was quite an amusing way. We've kind of paused it a little bit because there's been some busy work over the summer to move these on, but we may just start back up a bit and get going on some of those as well. Boards and Commissions. I threw this one out there. This is something that the mayor, myself, and the city attorney are kind of working through, was to review the boards, commissions, committee responsibilities and relevance. There's a lot of these that are intertied with city code, and so untangling some of those to understand them, working with the boards and commissions and their staff liaisons to determine, are they relevant? Are they needed? Can we slim them down? Do we need to beef them up? What does that look like? So there was some code implications that may have to happen there. It was paused this year, definitely because of the city administrator position challenges that we faced earlier this year. We're working on this for kind of coming back next quarter, the first half of next year as well. And some of this, as an example, you might see the Lawson Gardens Committee being sunsetted. As, you know, that committee isn't necessarily needed at this point, and it could be folded up into the overall Parks Committee and the Commission there. Wayfinding. Enhancing the welcoming community entrances and wayfinding here. This was one that we, guess what? We finished Project Downtown. Let me say it again. But during that, we added seven wayfinding signs throughout Grand, Main, a little bit on Paradise there, and we added the two kiosks. One of those kiosks there in Pine Plaza, the other one over near High Plaza. And there was just a quick photo that I took while it was raining of the sign that is there in front of, I can't remember the name of the business right there, but it's down there on, as you're going southbound on Grand. We removed about over 20 outdated or unnecessary signs down there. We cleaned it up, and a lot of that was wayfinding. There were signs there that were pointing to businesses that didn't exist anymore. There were traffic signs that weren't necessarily needed because we combined like an airport sign into the new wayfinding signs. We didn't need a separate airport sign that made that same point there as well. We updated the directional signage. So as an example of that, if you head out towards the wastewater treatment plant, we updated the sign that was there that had the old logo on it. We added new regional airport terminal signage, just primarily getting people to know where the new driveway was. But, you know, that was a challenge, and we had to overcome that as well. And then we're working with the Wayfinding Committee to incorporate the wayfinding elements within each of the four regions or the four hills in town as well. And we'll be working with our GIS analyst and manager, Sam, to what those main entrances into town look like as well. So those are still on the works. And with that, I cruised through it in 30 minutes, not 80. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Guido?
Well, in the interest of time, I will keep my comments short. Thank you for the recap and the review, and as someone who is going off of the council, looking back on two years of work, I think we have done a great job. I think you all have done a great job. That's a tremendous body of work in a short time of work, and in my mind, and it's great to see all that put together and culminated in a review. Just for the record, I want to remind you that the Pro Housing Group does plan to provide a report in December. So we will be giving that to you.
Yeah, his slides were just...
Yeah, it's all right. We're working hard on it so that it can be done before the end of the year. But personally, I just want to say I'm very proud of the work that we've done as a council, very proud of downtown Pullman and the work that went into that, and the benefits that I think people are going to continue to feel and benefit from.
Thank you.
Others? Councilmember Waller?
Just real quick, I don't know if we're planning to put some of that information on the website, but I really, really think it would be important. Some kudos to the city and so on and so forth. I think being able to put that out to the community would be great.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Fajron?
Oh, I'll add my thanks as well. Just, I know you only spent 30 minutes to cover, but it represents literally hundreds of hours of staff time, and I know that we have the best staff here, and they've made my time on council the first two years. I know I'm not turning them off. I have two more, but just easy, never asking a dumb question. I just appreciate the patience that all the staff has done and the work that they've done the past two years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parks?
Yeah, I just want to echo the thanks and also the thank you for presenting this in the public forum, so our residents, our community members can really see what not only you have done, but what all of you have done and all the other people who are not in the room right now. We tend to get some negative vibes from residents, and I really appreciate it when we can show them that things really are happening and everyone's really working hard, so thank you.
Well, and I want to thank the council, too, for the time and effort that you have all put in the last two years to get us to this point. You know, the vision that you've implemented here has only helped guide us in getting the tasks and the, you know, the physical improvements done, so thank you.
Great job, and thank you, I mean, we have incredible staff. It just shows. Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Consent Agenda. The items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion of the City Council without separate discussion. This time, I entertain a motion to receive the consent, to read the Consent Agenda by title only.
So move.
I, second.
And second. With that, that if you could read, no, actually, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That, would you please read the Consent Agenda items?
Thank you. First item, a motion to dispense with the reading of the regular meeting minutes of November 4, 2025, and approve them as submitted. Item 2, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, number 2011-32497 through 2011-32612, totaling $1,091,480 and 0 cents. Item 3, a motion to approve dispersments for advanced travel checks, numbered 1460 through 1468, totaling $1,897.40. Item 4, a motion to approve dispersments for electronic transfers, numbered 1 through 7, 499 through 508, and 510 through 517, totaling $2,694,368.81. Item 5, a motion to authorize the contract with Spare Labs, Inc., for cloud-based dispatch and scheduling software, training and support for use in Pullman Transit's dialer ride system. Item 6, a motion authorizing a contract amendment with GMV Innovating Solutions, extending the contract for one year to provide Pullman Transit's fixed route CAD/AVL system. Item 7, Resolution Number R-45-25, a resolution accepting a bicycle, pedestrian, and bicycle pathway easement to be granted by FJK Investments LLC in an exchange, authorizing the release of certain city property to FJK Investments LLC, as shown on boundary line adjustment number 268, and authorizing the Public Works Director to sign said boundary line adjustment as verification of acceptance and other matters related thereto. Finally, item 8, Resolution Number R-46-25, a resolution accepting an irrigation equipment access easement granted by Pullman School District, number 267, authorizing the execution of said easement and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Do any councilmembers desire to have any items removed from the Consent Agenda to be discussed separately? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So move.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is our first regular agenda item, a motion to approve the Teamsters Library Labor Agreement for 2026 through 2028. Jeff Albrecht?
Yeah, before you is the Teamsters Library Labor Agreement for the next three years. So we've been in negotiations, shorter negotiations than some of them that we've had recently, but agreed to terms, want to compliment the staff and the representatives from the union to get this one completed. So with that, I would look for a motion to accept the labor agreement.
So any questions of Jeff? If not, I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Item 2, on to you, Jeff?
Yes, next one is also Teamsters, and this is the maintenance and operations staff. So they work with our utilities and streets and innovative EOD program to approve again the three-year labor agreement for 2026 through 2028.
Any questions of Jeff? If not, I entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve Teamsters Maintenance and Operations Labor Agreement for 2026 through 2028?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next on to Ordinance Number 25-23.
Oh, yeah. Ordinance 25-23 is an ordinance to amend the biennial budget for 2025, 2026, specifically for 2026, and basically, it amends the budget for the amounts that were agreed upon for those two union contracts.
Any discussion or questions for Jeff first? No, I entertain a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
That, if you could read the motion, please?
Yes. Ordinance Number 25-23, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 24-14, adopted November 14, 2024, and entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting a Biennial Budget for the City of Pullman for the Biennium 2025 through 2026, Relating to the 2026 through 2028 Teamsters Local, Teamsters Union Local 690 Agreements for Library and Public Works."
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next up, number 4, Ordinance Number 2524.
We're rolling right along here. Ordinance 2524 is an ordinance that will amend the Pullman City Code related to right of way use. This was requested by the City Council back in February when we adopted the section of Pullman City Code 11.28. There was a section in there that was not adopted, which related to renewals of these permits, and council's direction at that time was for staff to come back with a section that discussed and changed the code to allow renewals. I presented this at the regular council meeting on September 9th as an update to kind of give direction and guidance on that. And so where we landed on that was a section that we created that was discussed at that time as well. Renewal of these permits would be allowed if there were six different things that we put into play here, or are proposing to put into play, that the appeal for the renewal has to be received no later than 10 business days after the permit expiration date, can be before, but after that 10 days, then it would be a new permit. So within that 10-business-day period there, that the use of the right-of-way must be identical to the previous permit. You can't come back and want to change that, what the use is itself. The applicant needs to be the same applicant, because that's who we originally permitted with. The original approved permit, any original conditions, and the site plans need to come back into that play. We have all that on record, but it becomes then a new application for renewal, and so we need to have the original documentation as it was originally conditioned for that. Any update to the required contact information? So if somebody's phone number, email address has changed, that's what we're looking to do. Any dates and times of the new usages would need to be amended as well, and any other relevant information that we need to renew that. And then the requested use of the right-of-way complies with the requirements, and what this is saying is that if the city codes or state law or something has changed in that time, we can't renew it based on those previous codes if something has changed. So as an example, if the city law says we need a five-foot clearance around the walkway and it changes to eight, we can't go back and reissue the previous permit using that five. We would have to make it compliant with whatever the new codes are at the time. During the review of all of this, we also encountered the issue that was brought up regarding city-provided electricity. And so we kind of rolled that into this whole code with that update as well, and added language that the right-of-way use could provide for city-provided electricity. And then there were some minor editorial changes that we caught with review of this while we were in that section of code, let's clean it up. And so that regarded the definition of city inspector and mobile pedaling. And so if the ordinance is adopted tonight by council, there will be a fee resolution that would be necessary to implement some of the new charges, primarily electricity, and that would be immediately following this on the agenda. So staff is recommending that the changes to the short, to the right-of-way use code be implemented as proposed, and I'm here to ask, answer any questions.
Any questions, Sean? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
That, if you could read the ordinance, please?
Yes. Ordinance Number 25-24, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, amending Pullman City Code sections 1128040 and 1128100, adding a new section, 1128140, as it relates to right-of-way use and other matters properly related thereto.
With that, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On to number 5.
Item 5 is the follow-up resolution I just spoke of, Resolution 4 R4925, which would establish the fee schedule. And so we added in to this fee schedule permit renewal fees. It doesn't change the application amount, but it does add a small amount for the review that staff has to do to verify that all the information is correct, and then do a new inspection of the re-permitted or renewed time or area there as well. And so that renewal application fee stays the same as $30. The renewal processing fee would be $118, so the total combined that the applicant would be paying for, for that renewal would be $148. And that only accounts for the public works staff time on that. And as similarly to how we established the base permit when we did that back in February, we based that on actual time that it takes the staff to do that work, trying not to run into a foul with the Washington State Constitution and the gift of public funds doctrine. We also added the electrical use fee, which, as we calculated into that, the electricity use fee, that was a fun exercise, dealing with the VISTA power rates, estimated time that somebody could use a particular outlet, the number of amps that outlet might be. And so we did this pretty cool calculation that determined that even after applying a safety factor and time of day, that it would be about $5 a day at maximum usage that somebody could use for the power. So that's what we were proposing, so that we could implement that and not, again, run into any issues with gifting of a public utility, like, and I think I mentioned it in there, we don't, we don't give away water when we check out water hydrant meters. If somebody wants water, they do pay us for that consumption. There's a similar thing there. We also did a, taken a look at this because this would implement beginning December 1st, so that we could implement some of those renewal charges, but also tie that into all of 2026. So we just did a wholesale adjustment of those fees for 2026 as well, basing that on cost of living adjustments and inflation, so that the review and inspection processing fee was also adjusted from $215 to $220 on that. And then the certificate of insurance requirements were clarified. This was the only area... This was the only area that we actually had the staff's insurance things. As you recall, when we did adopt the resolution back in February, we backed down the insurance requirement for general aggregate from $2 million to $1 million. So I didn't show that as a change here because that was already adopted, but I did update the sheet itself. And then we had some language in there that was very kind of dictatorial of this is the exact language that we wanted, and we had a lot of insurance companies push back on that. So we softened that requirement to get the intent. Really what we were trying to do was get the intent that the City of Pullman was the additional insured, rather than dictating this exact language that had to happen there. So with that, staff's recommending approval of Resolution R, whatever it was, 41, 4925. I had it not written down here, and I will be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Sean? Councilmember Fagerin.
I know it's not stated in here, oh, thank you Sean for bringing this back to council. And also, I know council member Delira, this was something that I believe she either seconded or put forward the motion for the renewals. I know it's not stated on here, but the first-time application fee, that's 245 with, the full thing, so it's a 245 with the application fee and then the review and inspection, inspection processing. So renewals are looking, we're looking at a roughly $100 savings in the renewal process. Awesome. I think that is kind of exactly why council directed staff for this. So thank you so much for, for the work.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to adopt Resolution Number R-49-25.
Second.
Thad, if you could read the resolution, please?
Yes, Resolution Number R-49-25, a resolution adopting a fee schedule for permits to occupy the right-of-way effective December 1, 2025.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Megan Vining, Resolution R47-25.
Thank you for having me tonight. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Annually, the Public Services Department reviews program fees and facility charges for the upcoming year and presents recommended updates to the City Council for consideration and approval. At the number, excuse me, November 12th Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, commission members reviewed and endorsed the proposed changes that I'm sharing with you tonight. As I noted to the commission, rising costs of equipment, supplies, third-party services, and facility operations have continued to impact our budgets. In response, recreation staff conducted a thorough review and analysis of our finances, fees, and cost recovery needs. The recommended fee adjustments will allow us to continue offering the programs and activities our community values while ensuring we can sustainably support facility operations, equipment replacement, and staffing needs. Our challenge is always to maintain a careful balance, being fiscally responsible and meeting our budget requirements, while also generating necessary revenue and keeping our recreation user fees as accessible as possible. Our goal is to support a comprehensive range of programs that promote equitable access to, for community members of all ages and income levels. These recommendations align with the mission, goals, and core values of Pullman Parks and Recreation. We remain committed to providing a complete and diverse recreation program within our adopted budget, emphasizing creativity in programming, cost-effectiveness, responsible resource management, responsiveness to community needs, and consistent program quality. We believe that proposed fee adjustments support these commitments and advance the objectives outlined in our comprehensive plan. Please see the attached memo with the highlighted areas for the specific program area changes. These highlighted areas represent a direct reflection of increased costs of goods, services, staffing, and/or professional services, and overall operational costs, adding or removing programs included in our fee schedule, updating promotions and program incentives, updating language in our refund policy, as well as procedures with money on customer account, and then updating our Care to Share guidelines and procedures. As recreation manager, I recommend adoption of the 2026 Program Facility Use Fee Schedule. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And one thing I do appreciate with this is not only is it where staff has come up with the recommendation, but then it went through the commission, which is community members that are sit on that commission that have reviewed this. So any questions? Councilmember Parks?
Not a question, I just want to say, I do, I mean, every, every entity is, is dealing with inflationary changes, and I appreciate that our Parks and Recreation Programs still have the Care to Share funds to help out families who may not be able to afford the fees. So that I really, I wanted to just highlight that because it's a wonderful program. Thank you.
Yeah, I will touch on that a little bit. We had a lot of conversations about our Care to Share program, and I think to myself, and Kurt and I shared this conversation, is what good is the money sitting in an account? Let's get it out there. And so really, it took a staff conversation of how can we change, as you can see in the memo, how can we change our current structure to reduce barriers for our families, give them the maximum, or give them more money that they can apply, as well as reduce the percentage that they are contributing? So being able to change the 50% that parents, family members need to contribute, to reducing that to 25%, I should say, reducing that, yeah, 25% on parents, and we are increasing our amount to contribute of 75%, really does make a big difference. For an example, is a family, if they wanted to sign their children up for an activity that was, say, $120, and previously, it would have been $60 the family had to pay and $60 we would have covered. Now that is, Care to Share will cover $90, and the parent's responsibility is now 30. So that will be a great addition for them, and we've had some really great support of Whitman County Public Health giving us scholarship dollars for free swim lessons, Pullman Child Welfare as well, as well as community events, our Tasty Leno 5K, our Halloween event, and a few others have really contributed to that balance, to make it really good for us to be able to present more money to our families. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Councilmember Fagerin?
Thank you, Megan, I appreciate that thought process when it comes to the Care to Share funds. Yeah, let's get that, get that money out there. I know this happened recently, so the minutes aren't posted, but did the commission pass the fee schedule unanimously?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Megan, I really appreciate that, and I appreciate, appreciate the thought process on, on the costs and the Care to Share. When I was younger, went through a lot of that Parks and Rec, and my family was very, we, low-income at the time, and so being able to use the Pullman Parks and Rec and everything at that time, they didn't have what you have now, and so means a, means a great deal seeing it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. It has been a true blessing, the amount that we've been able to raise and sustain in the account. We raised this amount just three short years ago, and we still are, have a healthy balance. So, you know, it's been great that the community is supporting that, so we can continue to keep increasing that amount for our families.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to-
To adopt Resolution R-47-25.
Second.
Thad, if you could read the resolution, please?
Yes, Resolution Number R-47-25, a resolution amending fee schedule for parks and recreation programs and facility use effective January 1, 2026.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, RJ Lott, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Next item on the agenda for this evening is a resolution to continue the moratorium on enforcement of electric scooters and bicycles downtown. This was originally a moratorium that coincided with the first, first contract that the city did with Spin to provide electric scooters and bicycles downtown, in an effort to get more folks downtown, especially after the completion of Main Street and Project Downtown. This was inadvertently omitted, I'll take responsibility for it due to a hectic and jumbled 2025, and in this expired, this moratorium expired back in June earlier this year. So I'll make sure that this gets back before the council in the spring, before this expires once again, if approved by the council, June 30th of 2026. Are there any questions at this time?
So this is a moratorium that allows scooters to be downtown?
Correct.
Is what it's doing during this time period, with the expectation for the first quarter of next year to actually bring something back for allowing scooters downtown? Yeah, the scooters and the bikes, yes. So any questions of RJ? Okay, with that, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Thad, if you could please read?
Resolution Number R-48-25, a resolution extending a moratorium on the enforcement of Sections 12.10.070 Subsection 1, 12.10.070 Subsection 2, 12.10.070 Subsection 3, 12.11. Point 020 Subsection 3, and 12.11.020 Subsection 4 of the City of Pullman Code until June 30th, 2026, as it relates to motorized scooters and bicycles usage throughout the City of Pullman.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. RJ, you're still up for the next one.
Yes, the next item is a motion to authorize a contract with Spin, once again, for electric scooters and bicycles throughout the City of Pullman, ending in December 31st, 2026. Spin has provided data, as you can see in your packet this evening, for the three, first three quarters of 2025, with the most rides occurring in quarter two at 2,232 rides. The main highlights of this contract would have the same fees tied to it as it has in the past. Annual fee of $12,000 paid by Spin, 20 cents per ride paid by Spin, and Spin provides for their own insurance for the riders. I did reach out to Police Chief Brashers, had a brief conversation with him. Police Department reports very few significant issues through the third quarter of 2025, with Spin representatives to be quick to respond to any issues that have been reported to them. I personally have only received two phone calls throughout the course of 2025, so issues have been very few and far between with Spin. Any questions I could answer with this?
Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. RJ, I'm not sure what issues may be being referred to, but I think it'd be remiss if I didn't bring up. I've seen quite a few abandoned Spin scooters, whether that was on the trails, particularly on sidewalks, in bushes, all up and down kind of Stadium Way. Think I saw one right down by a creek at one time. You know, anything that has to do with batteries, water, that's no good. I do think the benefits of having additional traffic, or people able to go downtown is good, so I think it outweighs the bad. However, I do know that several of us have received complaints, I can only speak for myself, but I know other people have talked to other council members, about scooters kind of weaving in and out of traffic and going relatively quick on the sidewalks. I don't know if that's maybe something that we need to clarify better where scooters are supposed to be. On one side of Stadium Way, there's enough for two lanes, two ways, but on the other side of Stadium Way, you know, there's a walk, walking, there's a sidewalk, but there's not enough room to get a scooter in there if somebody's walking at the same time. And I know that's the same way with several areas. So I've seen a lot more problems than just two complaints or a few complaints. I haven't called them in because I'm under the assumption that Spin knows exactly where these things are. So I think it'd be interesting to see data from Spin about where abandonment of these, you know, occur, if that's possible, because they are geolocating as far as I know. So that's my feedback, I will still support it, I'm just saying there's a few more issues that I've seen, but yeah.
Other, Councilmember Fagerin?
Thank you, I think this has been a wonderful addition to our community ever since it was brought in in 2024, and I feel like the numbers, numbers prove that. I actually rode my first Spin scooter a couple weeks ago, and boy, do those things go a lot faster than they did in my day. Well, now they're electronic, so. So you actually, when you, you use the app, it actually tells you where to park, the, what's allowed, what's not allowed, and maybe we just need to emphasize that more. I know when we first approved this, Spin did, I recall that Spin said that they would come in person and give like a tutorial. Would that be included with this renewal?
It could be. I think they did originally with the first contract, because the electric scooters and bicycles were so new. But if that's the wish, wishes of the council, I can reach out to them and see if they're willing to do something similar. I do know that they have Spin representatives here in Pullman all the time now, so that would be much easier to accommodate or facilitate having that type of event once again.
I think it would be worth us looking into.
Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move to authorize a contract with Spin for electric scooters and bicycles throughout the City of Pullman, ending December 31st, 2026.
Second.
With that, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next on to motion to authorize the lease agreement between City of Pullman and Whitman County Emergency Management to construct and maintain emergency services, communication tower on city property located on Southwest Skyline Drive. With that, Aaron Brashers, our police chief.
Good evening again. I will keep this brief, I prepared a little bit, but we're going to go a little faster than that. Essentially, we have a aging radio tower located on Southwest Skyline Drive. The radio infrastructure there is inadequate to provide the public safety needs for the Pullman Police Department, as well as for the Pullman Fire Department. We have looked at a variety of different solutions to the, the radio communications problems we have, and namely, the, that problem is the north end of town. And specifically around the high school and Camiak Elementary School and those neighborhoods, Pullman has hills, and the geography and the topography there, you must have direct line of sight for most of the radio communications to actually work. And so whenever you have a hill and your tower is not tall enough, you run into mediocre radio transmissions, and when you go inside of a building especially, that also is negatively impacted. We looked at some options for getting those radio towers improved, one of those was the Ugo Hills Water Tower. That didn't work out, there were some complications with maintenance of the water tower and infrastructure needs for the radio equipment there, so we went to a different plan, and essentially, the, the best option available to us right now is building a new radio tower on Southwest Skyline Drive. Whitman County Emergency Management is essentially taken over and radio transmissions for the City of- radio transmissions for the City of Pullman Police Department as well as the Fire Department. And the reason that we have really kind of collaborated with them and allowed them to take a strong lead on this is because they were able to secure a one-tenth of one percent sales tax that goes towards Whitman County Emergency Management Radio Infrastructure. So with those funds that they've been able to build up through tax collection, they can build us a radio tower without additional cost to the City of Pullman. That radio tower is about $750,000 and it would not be a direct expense to the City of Pullman other than what is already being collected throughout all of Whitman County in that one-tenth of one percent of sales tax. In order for them to move forward with building that radio tower, they have asked to lease a piece of ground on the southwest street where the water tower is located there where the existing radio tower is. And that existing radio tower is owned by the City of Pullman and it will have to be torn down because it's outdated and not safe anymore. Essentially, they need a 50 by 50 foot chunk of ground and a little bit of ground around it in order to put up a fence and some other infrastructure. And they, they can build us a radio tower that will greatly improve not only the City of Pullman Police Department and Fire Department, but the rural fire departments as well as Whitman County Sheriff's Departments, Emergency Radio Communications. It's really a, a win-win for us in my opinion, and I strongly urge the council to support this lease.
With that, any questions at the chief? Councilmember Weller.
Are there any neighborhoods surrounding this area?
There are. This process was opened up for public comment and it went, it's been going through the process with the planning commission. And there was some feedback and, but they did not appeal the planning commission's decision.
Okay.
Now, if there's, I entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
With that, if you could read it.
A motion to authorize a lease agreement between the City of Pullman and Whitman County Emergency Management to construct and maintain an emergency services communications tower on city property located on Southwest Skyline Drive.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, chief. Next up in discussion, Jeff Albrecht, Director of Finance and Administrative Services, discussion regarding, regarding city finances.
Good evening again. Before, here's a memo that really addresses five areas that we've started to look at as, as we deal with some of the financial challenges that we've discussed really for over the past, I guess, kind of few months really. So these are areas, and these five areas alone are not going to be enough to solve everything, but these are the things that have been started, have been sent out to staff. Staff have been actively engaged in doing some of these things. So the first one, I'll kind of just walk briefly through these and certainly give you a chance to ask questions at the end. First one is reduction in capital spending. So we do have approved CIP plan for 2026. Currently, our departments are looking at what's remaining for 2025, which isn't a lot, but there are still a few projects out there as well as 2026 to see if any of those projects can either be delayed, reduced in scope, or potentially even canceled completely. So that'll be kind of one of the first steps. So what that means is typically we bring budget amendments in December for those 2026 capital projects based off that CIP plan. You'll see those budget amendments will be less than what the CIP, approved CIP is based off of priorities to, like I said, either delay, reduce, or cancel those projects. Second one is fee and charges evaluation. You already seen a little bit of that tonight with a couple of things. But all of our staff and department heads are looking at charges for fees and services to make sure that they currently, they accurately reflect the costs associated providing those fees. And third one is open position review. So beginning November 1st, any position that is open within the city, it goes through review at the department and the city administrator to determine if that's a position that could be held open for at least a period of time to create some cost savings. And those will be evaluated on a case by case basis. Next one is travel and training. Similarly, we've asked department heads and, and at the city administrator level to review any travel requests. Certainly, a lot of our travel is required, particularly with the public safety areas. But there is some travel that, again, can either be delayed or canceled to create some savings. And then the last one is just operational spending. And so again, we've asked our departments to look at remaining 20, 25 expenditures as well as 2026 and their operation expenses. The majority of our operating expenses are related to staffing, so that does create a little bit of challenges, although the fees on the open positions may assist with that. But we have asked staff to look at areas where they can cut expenditures in their operations. Over time, contracted services, some of those things are kind of the key areas that, that we've asked staff to look for. So again, these are a step, first step to address some of these issues as we continue to monitor how revenues play out and some of those types of things. But staff have been very well and engaged with this. We actually gave the opportunity, we invited all staff, that if they had any cost-saving measures, no matter who you are, you didn't have, you don't have to be a department head, any staff, to be willing to share. We've had a couple of people reach out already and, and offer some ideas that we're going to look at seeing if we can implement or at least partially implement. So we know that engaging staff is, is going to be crucial in meeting these challenges. So this is just kind of to, to make the council aware of some of the things that we're putting in place and certainly answer any questions that you may have.
With that, any questions? Councilmember Fagerin?
A little, started forming, thank you, Jeff, started forming the question in my head, so I apologize if it doesn't come out correctly. As we all know, sales tax is one of the main drivers of our funds, our general fund. However, would even a dramatic increase in sales tax be able to overcome the, the revenue issue that we have?
I guess it depends what your definition of dramatic is. A tenth of a percent generates about a half million dollars a year. And so if the sales tax goes up by one-tenth of one percent, that, that generates about a half a million dollars in new revenue. So currently on the general fund, before implementing some of these things, we were looking at probably close to a three and a half to four million dollar shortfall. So, you know, if you do the math, you could get there with a substantial increase. So that's, that alone would probably not be a feasible option, but, but that is something to be considered for part of it, I guess.
Thank you. And I realize as I said it, I might have came out correctly because I said sales tax. But just say like we have an amazing, you know, fourth quarter holiday season. It's, we're, we're still going to have to look at other ways to save revenue outside of just trying to increase sales tax.
Correct. Yes. So, so total sales tax revenue is probably around six and a half, 6.8 million in there. So yes, if, if, if the sales went up by 10% next year, you know, that's only generating another 600 to 700,000 dollars. So yes, just, just banking on that happening alone would not be enough.
So with that train of thought, in your professional opinion, will council have to possibly consider cuts to services in next year's budget?
That's a, that's a real possibility, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Not. Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to go into executive session. Council adjourned to executive session pursuant to RCW 4230-110-1I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency potential litigation concerning I point to litigation that the agency reasonably may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body or member acting in official capacity or litigation or, or legal risk of a proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified when public discussion of the litigation or legal risk is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency. The executive session will, will last approximately five minutes. If it becomes necessary to extend the executive session, someone will return to announce anticipated additional time by the city council. The council does not anticipate taking action following executive session. It's 8:46, so we will return at 8:51.
Executive session will be convened for another two minutes to 8:53.
It's 8:55. I'm calling the council back into session. At this time, I'd entertain, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Were adjourned.